Recording in progress.
Good evening, happy spring. It is Monday, March 24th, and this is a meeting of the South Borough Planning Board. The Planning Board is now in session. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing for proposed accessory dwelling units by law in regulations. And Mr. Stein, take it away.
Thank you. So, we're going to be starting the presentation at town meeting with a motion to combine Articles 28 and 29 for discussion. And then, we're going to go into our presentation. Is there a way to get the presentation up on the screen, please? And, let's try to figure out if this is going to be in five minutes or not. Thank you. Yeah, that'd be good, thank you. Sure. But don't start it yet. Okay. Good to go, Colleen. Okay. So, the articles being discussed are 28 and 29 in the warrant, 28 being accessory dwelling unit by right, and 29 being accessory dwelling units by special permit. Next slide, please. Yep. We're good.
So, we have the correct one in the drop box. Would you like us to load the correct one?
Oh, please, let's proceed.
Proceed, okay.
Just, the board has noted that the slide currently on the screen does not reflect the correct warrant article numbers. They should be 28 and 29. Onward and upward, next slide, please. Okay. What is an ADU anyway? So, an accessory dwelling unit is a self-contained housing unit inclusive of sleeping, cooking, and sanitary facilities on the same lot as a principal dwelling. It maintains a separate entrance, either directly from the outside or through an entry hall or corridor shared with the principal dwelling. ADUs come in many different shapes and styles, such as detached units, attached units, interior upper level units, interior lower level units, above garage unit, garage conversions. Those are some of the examples. Next slide, please. The purpose of amending our ADU bylaw is to comply with state law, to update our terms and protect the town's interests by providing clarity in the zoning code. So, on August 6, 2024, Governor Healey signed the Affordable Homes Act into law, which is Chapter 150 of the Acts of 2024. Section 8 of the Affordable Homes Act amends the zoning act to allow accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, up to 900 square feet to be built by right in single-family zoning districts. Next slide, please. So, the zoning is going to be updated by these two warrant articles, 28, which is an amendment to include ADU by right, no more than 900 square feet. 29 is amend to streamline ADU by special permit for units greater than 900 square feet. This provision already exists on our zoning. We're basically codifying and making a few alterations in the process for the units greater than 900 square feet. The two warrant articles, if approved by town meeting, will ultimately create one new zoning bylaw, which is going to be 174-13.9, that will incorporate ADUs by right and special permit. Next slide. The term accessory apartment will be changed to accessory dwelling unit to match state law. A special permit is not required for ADUs under 900 square feet. ADUs over 900 square feet will still be allowed by special permit through the Planning Board, which is different than the current process, which is through the ZBA. This process is addressed in warrant Article 30, excuse me, which is now 29, and that is for zoning code 174-13.9G to replace 174-9B in its entirety. The ZBA will no longer be involved in the ADU process. All the permitting is going to be going through the Planning Board and the Planning Department. There's going to be prohibition on short-term rentals. The purpose of this, by the way, is, you know, the spirit of this is to increase our affordable housing stock and diversity of housing. Mobile homes are not part of this. They're not ADUs. We've removed the cap on the percentage of the number of ADUs that the town can have. This is currently capped at 5%. That's going to be removed. There's only going to be one ADU allowed per residential property. Next slide. Key change in definitions, accessory apartment currently listed as a subsidiary dwelling unit created within, or as an extension to a single-family dwelling or a structure accessory thereto, with separate cooking, sleeping, and bathroom facilities. This is going to be changed to accessory dwelling units. ADU is an attached or detached dwelling unit that is accessory to a principal single-family dwelling unit. An ADU shall maintain a separate entrance, either directly from the outside or through an entry hall or corridor shared with the principal dwelling sufficient to meet the requirements of the State Building Code for safe egress. Accessory dwelling units, again, may not be located in a mobile home. So, now, we're going to get into the codification. Next. We're removing this slate of zoning provisions, which are outlined on the slide. Next slide, please. And we're adding the following code, portions of the code. Next slide, please. And these sections are going to be amended to fall into compliance with the warrant articles. Yep, and this is the part that addresses the special permit path. Next. So, we're removing this part of the code entirely because it's being replaced with the new process for special permit from the Planning Board. Next. So, what are the benefits of accessory dwelling units? They provide rental income, or can provide rental income for property owners, and that can help offset maintenance and repair costs. They offer low-cost housing opportunities for adult children and other relatives to remain in their community. Enables more options for older adults, either as an opportunity for caregivers to live close by or to downsize while remaining in their community. It can add smaller rental units to the housing inventory to meet the needs of smaller households. Compact growth makes use of our existing land use, structures, and infrastructures, which can be more sustainable and far more economical than building a single-family home on a new lot. Next. Key distinction on the by-right path for Article 28, this is going to be through abbreviated site plan. Just want to explain what that is. ADU should minimize tree vegetation and soil grade changes. Architectural style should be generally compatible with the existing principal dwelling on the subject property. The ADU shall be serviced with adequate water supply and sewer receptics service. The plan shall demonstrate adequate parking as required hereunder and shall maximize convenience and safety for vehicular and pedestrian movement within the property in relation to adjacent ways. So, this abbreviated site plan will be through the Planning Department and the Planning Board. So, this will apply, both of these, to all single-family zoning except the industrial park. 900 square feet for Article 28, or half the gross floor area, whichever is smaller. Underlying zoning is going to be required on both, in terms of height, width, setbacks, et cetera. For non-conforming use, just referring to 174-19A of the code, this lists the requirements for alteration of legal non-conforming use, so this falls into line with that part of the code. Parking is going to be a consideration for both paths, and we talked about abbreviated site plan approval already. We can probably remove that, those two bullets, from this slide. The enforcement part of this is the building inspector, and violations will fall into master, and as far as the accountability, fines will fall under Mass. General Law. Next. So, the minor site plan requirement, and Karina, just pausing for a sec, is this is for Article 29, is it not? The minor site plan requirement?
No, that would be part of the...
So, abbreviated?
Yes.
Okay, so we should probably change on this slide, minor site plan to abbreviated site plan? Well, abbreviated site, oh, we can't, okay. So, this is why we're doing this practice run.
Can I pause the timer for a second? Okay, so here's, when I was putting the slides together, my greatest challenge was, we don't have an abbreviated site plan listed anywhere. So, that's all that's listed for a minor site plan. So, I think we need to establish what an abbreviated site plan is, perhaps tonight, so we can clarify. Okay.
So, we'll come back to that another time. We can go to the next slide, Colleen. So, just to address short-term rentals, the prohibition being for lower than 31 days to maintain some local control and not to conflict with the purpose of the state law and the spirit of the state law, which is to help increase housing supply and bring down the high cost of housing by developing smaller, more affordable housing options, short-term rentals of which are not. So, please vote to support Articles 28 and 29. Okay, so it was a good thing that I requested the extra time, and I will reach out to Mr. Semino to reiterate that. Thanks, Mimi.
Thank you, Jesse. So, do we have 10 minutes? Because it's two articles?
So, the way I just left it at the pre-town meeting is probably that it'll be fine, and I'm sure we'll be able to work it out with the town moderator.
Okay, because if we split it up, we'd get five for each one.
I did mention that, too.
We're trying to move things along.
I think our town moderator just really wants to run, you know, as efficient a town meeting as possible.
Yep.
I fully understand, you know, the question. So, but I have every confidence we'll get our five-minute extension.
Okay, very good. Any questions on the board?
Just feedback. So, I would say, I think this is your first time running through. I don't think we need to read the slides.
Yep.
I think highlighting kind of the key points, and also, maybe, once you get comfortable with the language, putting it in language that's just more layperson, because we extrapolated some right from the code, so I think it would just be in best interest for people to appreciate what you're saying. I wanted to raise a question about Chris Lund's feedback, and that's where I think that abbreviated site plan, if we make mention of what that is and establish that in our policies and fee schedules, et cetera, so we, are we going to bring that up and talk about his specific feedback? Because I am a little worried about his interpretation.
What is the feedback?
So, the building commissioner's feedback, to the best of my understanding, is that he felt like ADUs that are by right should be handled strictly through the building department with a building permit, that there should be no abbreviated site plan, that he has the ability to manage that through how the code is written and the state MGL requirements for that, and, you know, the CMR regulations that were promulgated for this mandate. And then, in the special permit ADUs, which are basically what we had originally, which would be anything over 900 square feet, the Planning Board was proposing to have that go from ZBA to Planning Board, but I think in addition, they felt that, or he felt, in part, that that should also not be required, that the ADUs basically just go through the building department. And I think...
For a special permit?
No, there would be no special permit, right? Didn't he mention that in our zoning meeting? So, then it's just by, then just the ADUs by right would not have the abbreviated site plan.
So, what would happen if somebody had, wanted to do an ADU that was over 900 square feet?
Oh, that would be the special permit. That would be applicable. So, you have the two. You have the by-right ADU, and then you have the special permit ADU. The by-right is 900 square feet and less. Anything above the 900 square feet would be similar to what we do, have done in the past. It goes to the ZBA. It comes to the Planning Board only as a discussion item for a recommendation based on certain criteria. And then, we send a memo to the ZBA saying, "Planning Board recommends it," or with conditions. They don't have to, the ZBA does not have to abide by those conditions, it's just a recommendation.
They have to say if they don't, why?
If they don't use them, they're supposed to say why in the decision. So, currently, this warrant article wants to change the special permit from the ZBA to the Planning Board, so it all happens under the Planning Board as far as the special permit. They don't have to go to the ZBA, apply for a special permit, get on a Planning Board agenda, and then go back to the ZBA, you know, for their, for their public hearing with the Planning Board's memo. It would all happen under the Planning Board. They would apply for the special permit for an ADU. The discussion would happen here, and they would get, be granted it or not.
Can I add something to that, Mimi? So, I think an important point that we need to make through this is, ZBA participated in the crafting of this, and ZBA didn't have an issue with Planning Board doing the special permit. So, I think that that's important, in my mind, anyway, you know, because there's been questions of why Planning Board's doing it and not ZBA, but I think ZBA participated, you know, through these hearings. Mr. Robbins was a very active participant. Ms. Cahill participated, Mr. Williams was here, and it notes, you know, everyone was supportive of that. So, again, I think that's an important point to make at some point through this discussion.
And I think that happened at least in, like, the midway point of these public hearings, so it happened early enough on. And then, again, you know, Town Council prepared the documents and, you know, then made revisions with Plannings. So, was there another question?
Well, I guess for me, he specifically calls out 174-8 Schedule of Use Regulations in Part C1. "All uses in buildings for which off-street parking is required, comma, other than one and two-family dwellings, comma, shall be subject to the site plan review and approval by the Planning Board as provided in 174-10." So, that's the general schedule of use for zoning.
Right. So, so a couple of things. This isn't either a single-family or two-family home, it's an accessory dwelling unit. And by right, well, by right, within a half mile of a train station, there is no parking, off-street parking required. So, this doesn't apply at all.
Okay. So, I think we just need to formulate something back to Chris to say why that doesn't apply, because if this is subject to his interpretation, that's just my greatest fears. We are in, we're in a different position than the person who enforces it.
Okay.
I'm calling, I know what you're referring to now, too. It's 174-8.
Right, the overarching schedule of use for your zoning.
Yeah.
Correct. So, I think as long as we call that out and maybe have a, prepare some sort of document back to Chris, I just think we need to be aligned in front of town meeting.
And I think I can speak a little bit more to it. It was based on the excess, that an ADU, whether or not it was considered an accessory use to that property.
Primary.
Right, and that's what it is. You need a primary dwelling to have...
The accessory.
An accessory apartment. So, that piece of the code that you read doesn't really apply to it, because it's an accessory use. You can't just go and build an ADU on a property, and that's it. You need a primary dwelling, based on the definition. And I, we did talk to Chris about that, and I think we came to an understanding of that. It just happened a few weeks ago, so...
So, he was aligned on that last communication? I really didn't feel like he was still...
What's the date of that communication?
Well, this letter was February 11th, but there was a communication that you had forwarded on email.
Okay.
It was March 11th, 13th, something like that.
March 11th.
All right, let me just take a look at that. I'm sorry to delay.
No, that's all right. I just want to make sure that we're aligned.
Do you want to set up an appointment to talk to him, Karina?
Yes, I just want to see if we can answer that right now. So, it was March 11th.
And then, it's just a series of communications that's been part of public meetings. So, again, like, is it a Q and A that we incorporate? And again, whether you go through the Q and A, or we wait until a question comes up, if it's proactive or reactive, I think we should have a Q and A slide prepared.
Okay.
Okay.
Marnie, what do you think about taking either this presentation or some of the presentation and having it? There's a lot to digest in here. I think people are going to get confused with what's amended, what's that. Does it make sense to have some of this as a handout as well?
Yeah.
Okay, and maybe even in advance of town meeting, reference people to come to the Planning Board's website, or, again, I just think it's a lot for somebody that's typically not, that's coming to town meeting to be educated.
Yeah, I totally agree.
Okay, thank you.
So, the plan of action is to, we'll get on the same page with Chris Lund, as far as interpretation, based on his feedback here. Because I thought we were, because I think I've had, I thought I had discussions with him after this came in. I just can't...
You did, you did. I just want to make sure we're fully aligned, and it's more documenting the process that says, "This is the building inspector, we're in alignment," and it's kind of a Q and A slide. So, I can help prepare the Q and A slide with you. We prepare a Q and A slide on why Planning Board over ZBA, and then I think we pull out and mark what's kind of a pre-read distribution prior to, and what actually gets said for a town meeting.
And I just, did you read the conclusion to the building commissioner's comment?
Comment?
So, in his letter dated March 11th, his conclusion, it was dated February 11th, but that was a typo. It really came in March 11th, that letter.
Oh, yes.
So, I didn't want to waste his time and have him send a whole other letter just to change the date, but the document is dated, the PDF file is dated, the correct date. So, his conclusion was that ADUs are a secondary or subordinate use to a primary, single-family dwelling. ADUs do not change the fundamental zoning classification of the lot. If the zoning bylaw allows ADUs by right or special permit on a single-family lot, it reinforces the notion that the primary use remains single-family residential. Unless the local bylaw explicitly reclassifies lots with ADUs as something other than single-family, they should still be considered single-family properties with an accessory use and exempt them from site plan review. My fear is that any site plan review is unenforceable per one sin for HC1.
So, we're not aligned?
So, we're not aligned, because we have the abbreviated site plan.
Correct.
And this is his reason why they didn't want that abbreviated site plan. And I think it's one of the reasons that the select board voted not to support the article at some year. I wasn't there, and I can't be sure, but, you know, just general feedback, it sounded that was the case. But, yeah.
Right, so he's going to say they don't need a site plan? So, I just think we need to-
So, it's part of state law. This was written by our town council, and it adds transparency. It gives residents a chance to hear about the ADU at a, a public meeting, where if it just went through the building inspector, you would not have that chance. In the abbreviated site plan, although it lists out in the code, we can do something on the website, but, so this is a Dover amendment use, so, "May be subject to reasonable regulations concerning the bulk height of structures determining yard size, lot size, setbacks, open space, parking, and building coverage requirements." So, that's it. So, the, the other thing's on there, or-
For the, for Dover abbreviated site plan?
For the abbreviated site plan by right.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on the board? No?
And essentially, it was to, the abbreviated site plan was to keep an aspect of that part of it when they do go to the ZBA, that the planning board has some input into that. And if there is no permit required, this abbreviated site plan allowed, like Mimi said, some transparency.
Yes, sir.
Timlett, Woodland Road. Just a couple of comments on the presentation. I do agree with Ms. Brascio and Ms. Houlihan's comments. First thing that jumped out at me was the issue of moving special permit to the ZBA. I think it's important to say, A, why, and B, that they're on board. But then, as a general comment, I think the best use of your time is to emphasize the why and de-emphasize the bits and pieces of code references and what's being stricken and what's being added. That belongs in a handout or, you know, a redlined document, because I, I think people will get lost in those details, and I think what's important is to focus on, so why are we doing this? And, you know, how does it impact you? I think, other than that, the presentation is fine. I just think the emphasis is not optimal.
Thank you, Tim.
John Bottalini for Y.S. Circle. I think Jesse did a fine job. I do have a couple of comments to make. If, in fact, what the building inspector is saying, and I think this was brought up earlier, then if the building inspector is saying, this is a, just like a single-family home, you don't have to come to the planning board at all, and everything's in his domain. Quite frankly, after hearing that, he might be right. The other thing is that I just wanted to touch a little bit on the abbreviated site plan. When I looked at this, and I read this, I thought that your four bullets was your abbreviated site plan. So, what I would do here is remove approval from the planning board pursuant to procedures 174-10 of this zoning bylaw, provided that the site plan criteria. So, just use your abbreviated site plan as your four bullets, which is what we do now for the special permits. I mean, I've been before this board before, and under the special permit, we make a trip to the planning board, we meet the four bullets. It's usually less than 45 minutes. It's in and out, and it's done, and then we're off to the ZBA. The only question, too, on the ZBA part, is that we joked about you being here till midnight. You really want to add special permits to this? Because the ZBA will just do it quicker and-
Well, if we're doing abbreviated site plan, we can do the special permit at the same time.
Right, I'm just saying. I noticed your agenda, and we were talking about it, and I was in to see Karina before, and she said, I'm overwhelmed, and I said, well, you're taking on more. So, I just think that you just need to move that, and then, this is, if this bylaw fails, it's still a state law.
Correct.
So, people go into the building inspector and get this anyway. So.
But having it in the code, I think, adds clarity, because it's been pointed out that a lot of, like, residents and homeowners, not necessarily very intelligent builders like yourself, will be, will be doing this. So, having it laid out in the code, like, this is what you're allowed to do, and this is what we look at.
I don't disagree with that.
I think makes it much clearer.
I don't disagree with that. This kind of mimics what we already have, except we did away with special permit.
Correct.
And I think it's, might be important to also notice that you've already given out permits in the past for this. So, keeping the bylaw that you have with the special permits really keeps the permits that have been issued over the years, keeps them legal and relative, so that they're not in non-compliance. Their special permit is still good, and so, but that's it. I think the four bullets for the abbreviated is more than enough. I don't think you're going to get a big, a big change in this. I don't think you're going to see tons of people knocking their door down on this.
Can I add one other thing, Mimi? And I had thought about this earlier, and thank you, Jack. You reminded me of the point. Do we want to add something somewhere, saying if this doesn't pass, what happens? And again, I think it's important that you, as a resident, need to understand that if it just goes through the building inspector, then you may not find out about it until the bulldozer show up next door. So, again, I just think it might be important to let people know what could happen if this doesn't pass. Thank you.
So, Marnie, maybe we can work on, yeah, we could do that offline. Should I make the motion? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I think that we should ask council about the building commissioner's letter. I don't think he's right, but I'd like backup on that.
So, motion to continue the public hearing for accessory dwelling units, special permit and by right to April 7th. Is it at 6 o'clock? What time are we doing that? 5:30 PM.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Brascio, yes.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, proposed zoning amendment, shared parking, 174-9 and 174-12. Mr. Stein?
Yeah. I don't think so. Colleen, do you have that deck available? It's super quick. Okay, so, we're now discussing Article 30, which is to amend the zoning bylaw for shared parking. Next slide, please. This will allow commercial businesses to utilize parking shared with another business owner. The impact to business owners will be in the industrial, industrial park, downtown district, and science district, and this will help us proactively codify the code to more efficiently utilize land, what's more environmentally friendly with less hardscape. Next. So, the requirements for shared parking between two businesses will be, number one, that the farthest parking spot can be no more than 500 feet from any of the user's lot lines. It'll be contingent upon a document, an agreement of some kind, to ensure long-term joint use. It's not going to be permitted in conservation, rez A, rez B zoning districts. Planning board will reserve the right to require a parking study or peer review. The approval may be subject to restricted hours of operation, restriction on requirement of a minimum or maximum number of spaces, and restrictions on use if the board decides that there are insufficient resources on the site for the businesses sharing the space, or if the board believes there are other transportation options available, such as bus or walkway. If there's any changes to an approved shared parking plan, those would need to be made, known to the board within 15 days of the change in use, and there would be a maximum of 60 days from any change from the notification to either come back into compliance on the site plan or request a modification to the site plan. And that's pretty much it.
Any questions?
And Marnie deserves the PowerPoint credit, as usual.
Yes, thank you again, Marnie. PowerPoint wizard. Any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments in the room? Any questions or comments on Zoom?
We have seven attendees. No hands raised.
So, I'll make a motion that we continue the public hearing for shared parking to April 7th at 5:30 PM.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes. Demiria, yes.
Brascio, yes.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, 48 Main Street, Fay School, building addition 25 Middle Road, major site plan approval. Karina, take it away.
Chris, I'll give you a chance to sit up. Do you have an easel?
I do not.
Can you go grab one? It's up on top of. It's up on my top shelf, Colleen, or there's one in the closet in Leah's office? And you, sometimes there's one right around here at the corner. No, right there, Colleen, on the windowsill. Right there on the windowsill. Okay. I'll get going. All right, while you set up, I'm just going to give the room a quick update. I do have to read the legal ad. Jack's writing. There it is. All right, since this is a public hearing, we have to read the public notice, and this is the public hearing notice. Major site plan approval, 48 Main Street, map 53, Lot 11, per Section 174-10 of the Southborough zoning code, the Southborough Planning Board shall hold a public hearing on Monday, March 24, 2025, at 7:00 PM, in the McCall of Hearing Room, 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass, and via Zoom, to consider the application of niche engineering on behalf of Fay School Incorporated for the proposed building addition to the 25 Middle Road building of Fay School, located at 48 Main Street, for major site plan approval. The hearing concerns a proposed 9,119-square-foot addition to the Fay School's 25 Middle Road building with associated site improvements for utility connection and stormwater management system. A copy of the application and plans may be viewed at the planning office at the Southborough Townhouse during normal business hours, or on the Planning Board Agenda Center at www.southboroughma.gov/AgendaCenter/Planning-Board-29. Any person wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated or join virtually at the following link, www.southboroughma.gov/674/virtual-meetings. Mimi Latrell, Southborough Planning Board Chair. And we received an application, and I worked with Chris Hodney, who's here representing niche engineering on behalf of Fay School, and ultimately, we received a complete application on February 21st. It was filed with the town clerk on March 5th. A submission was provided to Fussin O'Neil, the peer reviewing consultant. Niche is our new towns consultant, but since they were the designer, Fussin O'Neil agreed to continue their reviewing of this. The legal ad was provided to the, filed with the town clerk and provided to the newspaper on March 5th, with ads running on March 10th and March 17th as required. We submitted the application to the town departments and to the planning board. We did receive green cards and certified receipt, and the white mailing receipts on March 18th, as required, the Thursday before. And on Friday, just before noon, we received the Fussin O'Neil review comments of submission number one, which Monday morning, was this morning, I distributed to the applicant team and to the planning board. So, Chris indicated that he wasn't going to have time to do any revision, but he would come here to orient the planning board on the project.
All right. Very good. Welcome.
Thanks. So, as Karina said, my name is Chris Hodney with Niche Engineering. I'm here with Jeremiah Eck of Eck McNeely Architects, Architect in the Project, and Casey Russo with CSL Consulting, the owner's project manager. I think Diane is also remotely on this, although I can't see her name on there. She's with the Fay School.
Diane Burn?
Yes.
Just takes a second.
Great, yeah, there she is. Yeah, so she's here also representing the Fay School. So, I'm going to quickly run through our presentation here, and just, as Karina mentioned, we got the peer review comments this morning. We're looking, we've been looking at them, we'll address them. We want to just orient with the project, get any questions, comments that you have. So, just to give you an idea of where the project is on the site, the Fay School, which is across the street from where we are right now, is a pretty large campus. This is in addition to the primary school, which is on the southern part of the campus, closer to the subway reservoir. So, you can see the addition on here and the limit of work, which is limited to that small southern part, off of Middle Road. Can you flip that over? Just to give you an idea of what the building addition's going to look like, we've got three renderings here as well, which will be, which is shown on the right side here. Building addition's approximately 9,000 square feet over two floors, and it's going to contain four classrooms and a multipurpose room for the students at the school. It's on the interior of the parcel, so it's no closer to the property line from a setback perspective than any existing building that's on the campus. And parking-wise, the parking requirement, it gets calculated two ways, and we take the more restrictive ones, so it was either 155 staff or two per classroom. 155 staff was larger, so that was what we used for the parking calc. There are 233 existing spaces on the campus, so we're in the clear there, so no parking changes are proposed as part of this. So, just to kind of go through existing conditions, I outlined the building in blue. It's the existing building. You'll see on the next slide where the proposed addition is. You'll see on the next slide where the proposed addition is. The orange line is the property line. And then just to show that we are well outside the conservation limits, the yellow is the 100-foot buffer from the wetlands. Flip that around. All right, so shown on this plan, I highlighted the building addition in blue. The existing building is in gray, kind of up into the left. And we're rotated 180 from where we were just looking, just in case you're wondering. So dashed in orange are here our three utility lines, which run under the footprint of the proposed building addition, two storm drains, and a sanitary sewer. Those need to be relocated around the new building footprint. And that's really the majority of the site work that we're doing. There is a little bit of...well, there's definitely some stormwater management that we're doing also. We are going in front of the Conservation Commission Thursday night for stormwater management permit for that. And the system, which is that rectangle up into the right of the building, you know, we received a peer review letter on that as well, and we're working with them on getting that approved. Actually, before you put that back. Utilities, water and electric for the building are actually going to come from the existing building, but rather than running them through where they would cause, you know, cause us to have to do additional work inside the existing building, we're going to run, you can see on the left side there, the electric and water services, yep, will be run underground outside the building, just to minimize that impact inside the building. The...we're not proposing any new connections into the street utility-wise. They're going to reconnect to where they do today. And not very visible on this plan, which was actually one of the peer review comments, and we will address this, is there's a new walkway, which will be coming out of the building, which is directly underneath or above, I guess, our stormwater infiltration system, so we'll clarify that moving forward. So we also included a planting plan, which shows the proposed plantings around the building addition. This is designed to meet the town's requirements for the native plantings. And then if you flip that around. And there are new...there's new lighting on the exterior of the building, as well as some pathway lighting. So, not that this is very legible, but it is...this is the lighting analysis plan, which shows that, you know, we're in compliance with the town's requirements. With that...
Chris, can you just point out where the lights are?
Yeah.
Yeah, you want the pointer? Just so they can see. It's tough to see even...
They are tough to see.
Just so we have it in our head, right here. This is...you can just push the little thing in.
So on here, let's see. Here, so it's also...
Can you see it better here, Chris? Chris, on the screen, it's clearer.
Is it just those three right there?
One, two, three, and that's...
Couple outside lights.
Couple outside. There.
Exit lights.
Right there.
And those are reflected in the chart in the lower-left corner?
Yep, so the chart in the lower-left corner shows it's the models for them, as well as the bug rating and other, you know, color temperature of those requirements.
Okay, thanks.
All set?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stein.
So on the photometrics, I know that was small. I'm just having a hard time determining if there's any light still. I mean, I can see on the outer perimeter of the photometric plan, it's all zeros, but there's some kind of boundary behind the building. Is it possible...can you pull up the photometrics again, please? And so that curve...
You can point to it with that.
Yeah, thanks.
Hit the little button.
Yeah, thanks. So just where you were running your finger, right, and then so above that, there is some light spill. No, a little lower. There.
Yep. I see what you're talking about.
So is that within the site?
Yes.
And not light spill?
That's within the site. And so by the time we get to the property line, we're back down to zero there.
Okay. I mean, I have to commend you on a great job, excellent presentation.
No, thanks.
We appreciate that, your thorough work. And I think...I don't have any further questions pending the peer review. You guys are still working on your response to the peer review, so...
Yep.
That's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Lehan.
Hi, Chris, thanks, and team, thank you for coming. Thanks for coming prepared. We do love these, like, they just help, so we always appreciate that you do that. So in reviewing this, I'm...I just...we just got the Fussin O'Neil. So my comment is specific to Comment 6, which is the lighting plan. So our bylaw requires that it's the entire site, right? So it's not just the new building. So I need to see the calculation, which was missing from this. So it's the 1.25 lumens times the square footage of hardscape. So that total calculation needs to be provided, and I didn't see that.
So you mean...so that would be for the entire campus?
Yeah, it's...
Like the larger site?
Yeah, so technically, you have to be in compliance with the illumination for the entire campus. So I don't know...so we can't just look at a piece of it, right? Because the whole...the lighting bylaw is to really...it's a dark skies initiative. It's really to enforce that. So I do need to understand, like, and maybe you talk about the lower campus. I don't know how you would define that, but I think it has to be defined, and it can't be specific to just the addition.
Okay, so...
Well, that's going to be...excuse me for interrupting. The entire campus is going to be very difficult to provide that information. I think for the lower campus, around the primary school where the addition has been, that could easily be done, but I don't see how the school could possibly, in a timely manner, do the whole campus for this small project.
So this is only affecting the lower campus? So I...yeah, so I'm fine with that. Like, I think as long as it's on that Middle Road area, right, which it's that primary... it doesn't have to include the upper areas that are up towards Main Street, but I think that the intent of the bylaw needs the total calculation of...I didn't even see the calculation for this area, though, either. So even if you had done it, like, I don't see any square footage of the hardscape. So you guys are in LZ-1, which is a low ambient residential A lighting. And so if that's the case, if you do a lower campus illumination and you exceed it, that would be...you'd have to apply for a waiver. But I think we just need to see what that looks like.
I have a question about this. So I could see how you'd want to do that calculation for the whole building, because you're doing that, but if there's a building next to this one that's somehow at a sconce or something that wasn't in compliance, that's unrelated to this project, you would have to then change the lighting on another building on lower campus, because this...
You need to use a microphone.
Sorry.
The TV viewing audience can't hear you.
Usually I'm being told to be quiet, but...so I'm just asking a question of like, it makes sense that you would want to do the calculation you laid out for the whole building, because it's sort of a part of that, but if there was a building next door to this one that wasn't in compliance with the bylaw, it would trigger you to change something on another building, because we're requesting lighting for this addition? Is that how it would...
Essentially, yes, because the intent of the bylaw is really to protect...so it's residential A, right? It's low ambient lighting, and it's to protect the illumination around the area. So I think for my interpretation of our bylaw, and I did help write the bylaw, it's really something that's enforceable to say, if you're going to exceed the lighting, we'd need to understand why. Is it a safety pedestrian issue? But I think to have an understanding of how much more lighting you guys are going to put out there is an important component to the project for us to evaluate.
The fact...I understand, and I agree with you on that. I guess we have to define lower campus for you.
Yes.
And Diane, I'm sure Diane can do that.
Can I just ask to...can you just identify yourself?
Oh, sorry.
Recording clerk, and you have to also...
Sorry, Jeremiah Eck from Eck McNeely Architects for the project.
Jeremiah?
Eck, E-C-K.
E-C-K Architects. You are...
I'm Casey Russo from CSL Consulting.
From?
CSL Consulting.
CSL Consulting.
So we'll be happy to define lower campus. Diane, I'm sure can tell us what that is. What I don't quite understand is the building...the addition we're proposing to this building is well within the photometrics required by the towns, but now we have to go back and look at the building that's been there for 15 or 20 years and confirm that it is as well. It doesn't seem to make sense to me, but just my...just my question, really.
So I don't think it's the photometric plan, per se. It's the luminaires that you have on the buildings, which I would assume that's somewhere. Someone knows what kind of lights you have on the buildings.
Tell me about the existing building, not the proposed building.
Whatever you're defining as the lower campus that we're going to use as a calculation, we need to understand what their luminaire, what their lumens output is, because you have a defined hardscape that you're supposed to work within. So let's just say your defined hardscape is 30,000 lumens, and this addition now puts you at 90,000 lumens. That'd be 60,000 lumens over, and that violates our bylaw. So we would need to help you evaluate, how can you bring it into compliance, or ask for a waiver, and still bringing it close to compliance.
Is the bylaw based on...is the bylaw based on, like, specific to a parcel? Is that why? Because this parcel makes up of several different buildings? Because usually campuses are like one address? So is that why?
So the bylaw is based on really where this is situated. So because this is residential A, it's called LZ-1, which is ambient light. So we don't want really too much lighting out there, because it is in a residentially zoned area. And the intent of the bylaw is it's an outdoors...dark skies initiative, right? It's to kind of preserve our world, if we can anymore. Sorry, that was probably off-kilter. But the goal really is to just make sure it's protective of the dark skies and that people...that you guys, when you come and build, that you respect what the bylaws are associated with illuminating the area. My guess is that you don't have lumens that exceed the square footage of hardscape, because you got...and Fay School is when you do put things up, they're sconces, they're usually low light, they're well...they're well-covered, they have areas of illumination, but you're not really projecting huge amounts of lights unless you have a sports field. So I'm not too worried, but I think just to be in compliance with our bylaw, you need to do the calculations and submit them to the planning board. That was the only comment that I had on the plan, otherwise I thought the plan was thorough. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Maria.
Hi there, thank you for coming in. I just wanted to ask you if you could just review with me again how you did the calculations for the parking? I know you mentioned there are two different ways you were thinking about it, and I didn't catch how...which way you chose.
Yeah, there are two...actually, it's on the very first...it's on our cover sheet, which is on the backside of this. So on the bottom left of this plan right here, we've got the calculation. So there's two ways to do it, and we're doing it for the campus overall, which is two spaces per classroom. There's 63 classrooms on the campus, so that would be 126 spaces. There's also 155 staff, and it's one space per staff member. So looking at that, we are taking the more restrictive one, which is the 155 per staff, as being the requirement, rather than the 126 based on the classroom count. And so that's what we're using as the required parking for the site. And then there's 233 existing spaces, you know, throughout the campus today. So we're under that. So that's how we've done the calc here.
And then you mentioned a walkway. Can you just show me on the plan where the walkway is?
Yes.
To which road, to Middle Road?
No, it's actually just to get back to the walkway, which is there today. The planting plan is probably the best one to show it. So you can see it's that straight line...it's coming out of the building, there's a walkway. You've got that door in the center on the right side. And then there's a walkway going straight up to connect to the existing arcing walkway.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Ms. Rasheau.
Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you for coming, and I have nothing further to add, other than, once again, thank you for submitting such a complete package. It certainly makes things a lot easier as we move forward, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, great presentation. Just one little picky question.
Love picky questions. Let's hear it.
So the...where are we? On the existing conditions plan, you show an approximate property line stamped by a land surveyor? Do land surveyors do approximates?
I'm not a land surveyor, so I can't answer that question, but I can certainly speak with our land surveyor.
Okay. I thought that's why you had a land surveyor, to get your property line.
Yeah, I can check and get back to you on that.
Okay. And then the other thing, my favorite subject, planting. Pretty good on the planting, pretty close on the natives, but hybrids are not natives. I know they're natives for all those hybrid shrubs that are listed. I would prefer to see natives for our environment, if we can save it. And then the trees are required to be a minimum of three-inch caliper. And then I'd just point out, on the Fussin O'Neil letter, they refer to a section in the code 174-13.5. That's an old thing. I think that's a stormwater bylaw, so that you're not going to find that in the zoning code. I think it...I forget what section of the code that is now.
Which comment was that in the letter? Oh, I see.
You're not going to find that in the code, I think.
Number 10? I think it's Comment 10? Is that it? Nope.
It's like 10, 11, 12? Yeah.
So they moved that code, that's out of the zoning code and into the general code.
Okay.
So you'll find the requirements there.
I assume the comments still stand, it's just a different reference.
Yeah, I just didn't want you looking in the code and saying, "Where is this?" I think...
Sure, I appreciate that. It saved me a few minutes of thinking that I'm losing my mind.
Don't want you to think you're losing your mind. And that's all I have. Thank you very much. Does anybody in the audience have any questions or comments? Anybody online?
Four attendees and no hands raised. So Chris, next step is that you'll provide a revised supplemental?
Yeah, so we will provide you revised supplemental based on what we heard today and these comments.
And the Fussin O'Neil comments, and then it behooves you to get it in as soon as possible, and for it to be heard at the April 28th meeting, it's best to get it in at least seven days in advance.
Sure, yeah, we'll get it to you as soon as we can.
Okay, and it will go back to Fussin O'Neil for a follow-up review. So, you know, the sooner you get it, maybe we can make that happen in between that time to save time. There's no guarantees, but we always, you know, shoot for that goal.
Understood.
But we'll try and help you as much as we can expedite that.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Stein.
So I'll make the motion that we continue the public hearing for 48 Main Street, Fay School, Building Addition at 25 Middle Road, major site plan approval to April 28th at 7:00 PM.
I have a motion in the second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I do have a discussion, a question. So we will not have public hearings ostensibly before this public hearing. Should we have the public hearing time at 6:30 PM for the sake of efficiency, or are we going to use that time for other...
So I think we had it started at 6:30, so we could push discussions up there, and then when we got the zoning code, we put them there. So I think 7:00 is good. So I think 7:00 is good.
Thank you.
Any further, any more further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Lutrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demuria, yes.
Brashio, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. 250 Turnpike Road Contractor's Yard Building. Major site plan approval and special permit for low impact development.
Since the last meeting, I have been in contact with Niche Engineering.
Yes.
Who is the peer review for this project, for the Contractor Yard Building. And they're, I anticipate their review today, I mean tomorrow or Wednesday. It's coming soon. It's like within a day or two. They're just about there. At the last public hearing, this is for major site plan and LID. We're still reviewing submission number five for the site plan, which became the LID submission number one. And that's all incorporated in one set of plans. And Attorney Bonan had provided a list of questions he had. But it was very close to the last meeting. So the planning board did not have enough time to really have a chance to review.
It was at the last meeting?
No, there's no reason. No. It was at the last meeting. Yeah.
The questions were provided after?
Yes, that's what I mean. Yeah, they were, oh, that's right. I get the distinction. It wasn't just right before the meeting. It was actually at the meeting. Okay. Okay, and in, in addition, Attorney Bonan has also signed an extension request, knowing that we have to go to April 28 with a decision action timeframe extended to May 2. So we have a copy of that here just to keep this process moving. And when Niche's comments come in, I'll get them to you right away.
Thank you.
With them. I give them a quick check to make sure there's no, like, it's the wrong project or something like that. But we'll get them to you right away.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate your patience.
Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. George Bonan for the applicant FD 250 Turnpike LLC. I don't think since the last meeting, I have anything to add to this meeting. I'm, but I'm wondering if the board has had a chance to review my letter from, from when I passed it out last meeting. It's been about two weeks. And I'm happy to discuss it or answer any questions that you may have. But beyond that, I don't have anything to add today.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Stein.
Sorry, I wasn't here physically for that. Was that the waiver request list or the document?
That was that letter.
Oh. Oh, okay. So I'm going to have to pass on that for the time being. Thanks. Yeah, yes, please. Thank you. I guess I'm just going to pass, actually, for now. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Houlihan.
Thank you. Good to see you again. No, I thought the letter documented what we asked of you. And then I think it's just a matter of process, right? The niche review and then your response to be able to supplement.
Yes.
All the requests.
I agree.
Thank you. I felt it was satisfied what we asked of you.
Thank you.
Ms. Maria.
Hi there. Good to see you too. No, I don't have any questions for you. Thanks for putting that together. I thought it was pretty thorough. Appreciate it.
Ms. Brashio.
I will add the same. Thank you very much. It was very helpful. Thank you.
My only question is the, the landscape buffer strip, the side in rear?
Yes.
So there, so when the fence went in, there was clear, a lot of clearing done there. So I don't know what's left.
I'm unsure if there was any clearing or, or much clearing done. I'm, if I'm being honest with you, I'm, as I remember it, there's still at least 10 feet of vegetation between the property line and I guess the fence at this point. I can double check that for you if that's your concern. I'll be happy, happy to come back in on the 28th with.
Okay.
An answer.
So the, the concern is that that, the buffer is supposed to shield the, the parking area? And so there's the fence and there should be a buffer afterwards so you don't see into the parking area. But that's all been cleared. And then the site kind of slopes down. So there's, you know, some brush and stuff sloping down. But it's not buffering that parking area, which is the point of the, the landscape buffer.
I don't think we cleared any more than we had to in order to install the fence. And once again, I do believe that there still is at least 10 feet of vegetation, whether it be shrubbery or.
In front of the fence?
Yeah, well, between Parkerville and the fence, yes.
So, well, I've been there and I've walked in. And it, there's, there was a substantial, probably 10 feet of clearing.
Okay.
Around the fence. And then the property slopes down. And so there's some shrubbery and stuff. But it's down, it's down lower than the fence up here, so it's not.
I can't, I'm not sure I can add anything right now without having to take a look, without taking a look at it. And I'll do that between this meeting and the next. Is there something you would propose if there is inadequate screening that I can implement in the next site plan, the next submittal?
Adequate screening.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all I have. Anybody in the audience have any questions or comments?
So is this going to also be at 7:00?
So John Palmer, 131 Parkerville, a Director Butter. So Mimi, to your point, there was a fair amount of clearing done on the far side of the detention pond. And, and I think that's where we've talked to you about perhaps putting up some additional screening to screen between our properties and, and the, the site that you're trying to develop.
Yes, that's true. And I don't want to speak for Chair Lutrell. But I think she's referring to the area between Parkerville and the fence, the side property line, if you will. Yes, we did agree to add a little more screening in front of the detention basin, which is included and shown on the site plan, which we still plan on doing. And then separately, we've obviously had discussions about adding more vegetation, trees on 125 Parkerville. But those, the addition of those trees are not subject to the site plan review.
So I just want to make sure that, that we've followed through on, on getting that screening at the, at the, I guess it would be the, the south.
Correct.
Side of the property. And the additional screening that we talked about on 125.
If I may, yes. The additional screening that we can show on the site plan is showing. And that's, I believe, around 12 trees added between the fence and the detention basin where we could add them. And then separately, we will move forward with some further landscaping on 125 Parkerville to increase the density of vegetation and increase the landscape screening. But that won't be reflected on this site plan because it's not part of the site.
So, so Mimi, from a Butters perspective, that's what we'd be satisfied with. Myself and Fred Harvey would be satisfied with, with both screening on the south side of, of 250, the, the parking lot there, as well as screening on 2, 125 Parkerville as, as proposed.
Okay, thank you. I don't, so on 125 Parkerville, it's outside the site. So we, so we've, he said it in public. We've heard him. And certainly mentioned it at the ZBA because that's on the, the 40B site. Make sure that they can follow through with.
Technically, it's not on either site. But yeah, we'll have to figure out where we, we account for the, the screening on 125. I guess that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
But just to be clear, I'm asking for screening.
On the side.
On the side.
I understand.
And along that property, the zoning line on the south side also. You have some trees, but it should go all the way across until you hit the wetlands.
May I approach Chair Lutrell and you just, oh, if you can point it out with the laser, just so I'm?
So here's, here's the, hold on a second. Here's the zone line.
Yep.
Okay? And here's the property line. Right here. Here's the property line. And here's the zone line. And here's the detention.
Yes. Now, if, Karina, if you hold that pointer where it is right now. Oh, actually even better idea. Okay, so Karina just had the pointer. And I just actually want to catch it right here. This area, we will add some trees going from left to right. You'll see in between the fence, this is the fence right here. So to the south of the fence, but not, so that it doesn't touch into the no disturb area, we'll be adding trees. The green dotted line is the no disturb area. So we can't, we can't add any more vegetation over here. But between the fencing and then the green dotted line, we will add trees as proposed on the site plan. It may be, it may be on the landscape plan. And this over here is existing vegetation. These are existing trees. So this, this area is really the only area we can add any more trees.
And that would, that would be to make up for the trees that were removed to, to clear out the detention pond?
No, the detention pond's right here. And most of the clearing was done around the, done around the immediate area. This, I believe, if it was removed, it was because we had to add the fence. But regardless, we plan on adding additional trees over here. And it's indicated on the site plan, or landscape plan, rather.
I guess I would just say that, that whole area from the, where the, the parking lot ends to the detention pond and even beyond the detention pond, that whole area was, was cleared quite a bit from what, what previously existed.
Yeah.
And that's, that's why I think we've got a screening problem at this point.
I agree. But we had to clear it out per comments made by the Conservation Commission. It was our duty to maintain it. So we had to clear it out. We didn't do it because we wanted to. It was, it was mandated by the Conservation Commission.
So outside of the no touch to the east, there's still some room for some.
Over here?
Yeah. And if there are existing vegetation over on the east there, it should be called out on the, the site plan.
Absolutely. You know, I'll take a look at that. And if we can add more trees in this area, we certainly will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone online?
We still only have four attendees, no hands raised.
So just in terms of making the motion to continue, we have a public hearing at 7:00 already. Is this going to be at 7:00 as well? Like it appears on tonight's agenda, or do you want to move to 7:05?
Are we going to have to change this?
We can just write that. If you don't mind if we change. It doesn't matter if you start at 7:00 too. We can start all of them at 7:00. But it's better, so we can just stand right at 7:05.
That's fine with me. Yep.
So the motion is to continue the public hearings for 250 Turnpike Road Contractor's Yard Building. Major site plan approval and special permit for lower impact development to April 28, 2025 at 7:05 PM.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Lutrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demuria, yes.
Brashio, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll get you those as soon as they come in.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing to East Main Street. Multifamily building, major site plan approval and special permit downtown district.
This is what you emailed me, right?
Right.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to have to read the public, the legal ad.
I want you to.
Okay.
Thousand dollars later, I want you to.
Would you like her to stand at the podium?
Yeah. Make it sound good.
So I just want the planning board to be aware that we don't need an actual extension request for this continued major site plan and special permit for downtown district because we filed, Peter filed updated applications when he changed from a mixed family development to a multifamily. Town council had advised that it should be a new filing. So we re-advertised in the paper for two weeks. And the clock starts new from the date it was filed with the town clerk, okay? So let me just get your legal ad.
Can I ask a question about that? I don't see the decision due date.
It's on the second page. We're, the agenda's so long, it's on the second page.
Thanks.
Okay? And that's the, reflects the updated decision due date. So this is the legal ad. The public hearing notice, major site plan approval and downtown district special permit to East Main Street Assessor's Map 54, Parcel 43. The Southborough Planning Board shall hold a public hearing on Monday, March 24, 2025 at the 7:10 PM in McCall of Hearing Room, second floor Townhouse, 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass. And via Zoom to consider the application, applications of Peter Bemis for the property located at 2 East Main Street for major site plan approval per 174-10 and special permits for the downtown district per 174-8.12 and Section 174-10.2 for multifamily dwelling. Previously advertised as a mixed use development, these hearings concern a proposal to construct a six-unit residential building, including a parking area and related infrastructure. This site is located in the downtown district. A copy of the application and plans may be viewed at the planning office at the Southborough Townhouse during normal business hours or in the Planning Board Agenda Center at www.southboroughma.gov/AgendaCenter/Planning-Board-29. Any person wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated or join virtually at the following link. Mimi Lutrell, Chair, Southborough Planning Board. This new filing. So we filed the applications with the town clerk on March 5, advertised in the paper on March 10 and March 17. Peter provided, a Butter notifications and evidence that green certified return receipts. certified return receipts and white mailing slips that he emailed to me previously and provided the hard copies of today. Fosse &amp; O'Neil provided a peer review, which we considered review of submission number two, which actually was the new layout of the multifamily. That was provided to Peter Bemis and he's working on, if I'm not mistaken, a revised submittal as necessary, as applicable. I would like to also just point out a couple of things I know that Open Space Preservation Commission had some comments that they were going to address and provide, but I haven't received anything officially yet.
Okay.
And I think one of the concerns was there was no landscaping shown for the detention pond or the rain garden. There was some reference to, I'm just giving you a heads up so that you know. The other concern was in the front left corner of the property, there's that right away we talked about that shows up on the GIS mapping. And you were going to research that and provide clarification to show that it doesn't impact your project.
Right.
So those are the things that brings us up today.
Thank you, Karina. Welcome, Mr. Bemis.
Good evening. Thank you. Peter Bemis, Engineering Design Consultants. And we did have a discussion about the revision set that you have, the revision two, where we've modified the plan from mixed use to, to straight multifamily. In the February 3rd response package, we had 25 comments that we had to address from Fosse &amp; O'Neil and now we're down to four. So we got this information too late to make your response deadline. So we knew we'd have to continue from tonight. And I wasn't too concerned about that anyways because I want to make sure we have everything done and buttoned up before we finally get to a position of voting on this. So I thought I would, and rather than go through all the items that were in the 25 items, there's no need to because we're down to really four. So the focus from my perspective would be item nine. We did, Fos came back, is leaving it to your discretion relative to the lumen count. Because this property, and maybe there was no consideration for lighting levels being somewhat adjusted for that type of use. But I feel that we should have at least a minimum amount of pedestrian safety with this. So we've reduced them as much as we can. We're down to 3.8, four lumens. We're trying to get down to 2.5. So we either knock out another light fixture and bring the light levels down even more. So it's really going to be come up to the board. You're either comfortable with it and there are some controls on the lighting, or you're not. And we just stick to the 2.5. There's really not a lot more we can do. You've got simple LED light fixtures in the soffits. So I tried to eliminate all of the wall lights. So there's no illumination there. It's all downcast. And then the fixtures for the parking lot are also contained and they're just bringing down a downcasted light. So we're either going to say that's a light lighting level that's acceptable, or I'll just get to 2.5. And there's going to be some, I'd call shadow areas, where there's just not a lot of light, unfortunately, because you, it's such a low threshold for a small site. So that's what I would say with that. If you want to have some discussion about it before we're done tonight, that would be great because that's, that's where the math comes from is, you know, how many lumens are we going to have? And I've taken a fixture wattage. It's not the recommended. I went down to the next level. And there's one more below that, but I.
Peter, can you just speak up a little?
There's one more level below that, but I don't, I think that would be even lower. I'll just move the mic over. The, the other item was, again, it's board discretion. We have a parking lot that we have a turnaround in at the end. We, I would envision that if we had a, a safety matter here with a fire apparatus, we're not going to be necessarily coming into the parking lot to service that. We're serviceable on two adjacent streets. That's likely how they would deal with this, just like they would any of the other commercial facilities that are located in this area of town. But if, you know, need be, we can put a, a second curb cut in there. It's just going to get close to the light. It's not what we would want to do from a design perspective, but it can be done. So again, that's board discretion. The, the other item was the conservation related with the wetlands. Conservation Commission was kind enough to give us another extension for the project. Our permits continue to be valid for the lot and they gave us a, essentially a year and a half extension so we could get through all of this. I believe the planting is done. We actually did the work already on the wet basin when Beth Rosenblum was the Conservation Commission agent. And then the last is the FAR. And basically it was just an observation on their part because we're within the rights of what the FAR is for the project. It's a special permit demand. We don't exceed the threshold and we've asked for the special permit. So we're filed properly. It was just a matter of the board taking care of the paperwork when they do the decision. I'll address whatever open space comes up with and then as far as any of the property matters, I'll take care of that with you between now and the next meeting. We've continued to the next meeting already. But, you know, any of these items that we could try to take care of tonight, or if there's something specific that you want me to have addressed for the next meeting, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stein.
I do not have any questions at this time. Thanks.
Ms. Houlihan.
Hi, Mr. Bemis.
Hi.
So I will say that Peter and I have had several conversations around the luminaires and the illumination. It is really hard to get down, particularly with all the parking in the back. And it's 11,810 square footage of hardscape, so it really does minimize the availability. I guess, Peter, the question that I'd have is, is there a way to, like, think about the, the illumination around the building versus in the back area? And like, I know you said you'd have timing and stuff like that. Is there a way to kind of control the illumination output? Because, you know, the goal of the outdoor illumination is obviously dark skies initiative, is to kind of protect it, but be safe. Because I do think we want to have that safe, safety realm. Plus, you're now on a, like, you're on a corner. So you're going to have like sidewalk and potential pedestrian traffic. So I like how to think about that as a planning board too, relative to what we, we did with the, the open, not the open space, with the downtown district. I, I got to say, we went through the different lighting. I think the lighting's appropriate. The selections are appropriate. I think if he goes any lower, it'll be challenging to illuminate appropriately for the use. So I think that, like, I guess I would be, knowing that I've tried to work with Peter, I mean, he's worked with me, not, not that he hasn't tried to work with me. We've tried to figure out alternatives. It's very challenging to kind of get down to what we needed to do in the zone. So I like what he's put together. I just don't know if there's a way to reduce it without impacting safety. So I guess I would be in favor of a waiver. Relative to the other comments, I had said on the, the fire truck, it didn't look like our police or fire had any issues and it, it satisfied their needs. So I think that Fosse &amp; O'Neil comment reinforces that. And then on the, the comment number 24, I just said, you're still in compliance. So you're still in compliance. So, I mean, generally, I think as long as you're meeting kind of all the requirements and then obviously we have your abutters and neighbors here, it'd be good to hear from them as well.
I would just say that on the, on the fire suppression, this will be a sprinkled building. So there's, there's protections already built into the site. And then on illumination, there, there are light fixtures that are in the street layout in this section of town. So there's the benefit of that, giving some added lighting, if you will, for background. It's just the parking lot itself. You kind of can't, you think about those winter days where the, where the sun's going to go down early. People are going to be getting home at that hour and then someone departing early. You just want to have enough lighting in, in the parking lot, that's all. So I think at 3.8, it, it works. But if there's any reservations, I'm, I'm just saying that it can be done. If you tell me I have to be 2.5, we'll be 2.5. And we just ask that, you know, we've tried to get it to a level that works. And thank you for your support on that.
Ms. DiMaria.
Hi, Peter. Thank you for coming in. I just wanted to ask you about ADA. I think you mentioned last time whether, I just can't remember whether any part of the project will be ADA compliant.
Right. So the, the site will be fully. And then at this point now that we're, because before we had a second story residential, now we'll have first story. So I, I'm looking at trying to make those apartments on the first level, all handicapped accessible. And likely that's where the affordable would go as well because it just, it makes sense to make it, that someone that has the affordable opportunity also could be handicapped. And why restrict them from that? So that's the goal.
There'd be like lower countertops and?
There's, there's, there's all sorts of formulas for it. But yeah, to the extent that it makes sense. I don't want to make something that's not marketable.
Right.
But at the same time, to the extent we can make it, certainly the bathrooms being accessible, that's really important. Some of the areas can be adjusted according to the tenant. We'll have to see. But I can assure you that at least one will be. Versus before, I couldn't make any of them because it was second floor and we didn't have an elevator.
That's what I was hoping you'd say. And I really appreciate that you're thinking about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Rashid.
Great. Thank you, Peter. It's nice to hear that about the accessibility as well. I guess, my question, Karina, I'm going to ask you. When I look at the, the letter from the fire department, it seems very standard to me. It tells you what you can do. It doesn't say that the site meets the requirements. Am I, am I missing something here? I mean, to me, it would make more sense for Peter to have a conversation to say, guys, what do you want? Are you good with it this way? Or do I need a second curb cut? I don't know that it's specifically up to us to make that call. I understand the reasoning for it because the letter I see from the fire department doesn't make any sense to me. It just tells you what you got to do. There's no specifics. So.
Okay.
I, I would suggest maybe, and I guess it's not really a question, I'm kind of making a statement, kind of with a question, but maybe a conversation, Peter, just, just for their comfort level.
Okay.
You know, for them, sorry, am I, go ahead.
I had asked for a more succinct request from the fire department and I thought he gave us one. So.
Okay.
I thought we got something because I thought it was very standard. And I said, this actually doesn't address whether it meets the requirements.
Exactly. Okay. So standby, Peter. It may not be, I may rescind my comment here. Good to know great minds think alike though, Marnie.
You're not referring to the response to the DPW memo where we talked about the drainage, but also the site distance. And then the, someone from Public Safety, I can't remember if it was Fire Police opined that they also didn't have a problem with the site distance. There's a separate one you're talking about. Okay, I just wanted to.
Yeah, I think it was an email, Karina. I had asked if we could get a little bit more clarity from the fire department on their response. And he did respond and I thought he said it was fine.
That was Christian. I think it was from Christian.
Like, yeah, because you were on that too.
Hold on, I.
It's probably in the Dropbox.
I copy all of those into a town departments for the project. Let me just go to that and see if I'm missing something.
Maybe it is in the Dropbox and I missed it, but I only saw the standard letter.
And it would have been from the fire department? And so I have the December 5th and you're saying, Karina, it's in an email. I categorized those two by town department. So hold on, I'll just get there real quick.
One from December.
To East Main Street, town departments, fire department. So I have.
Nope, that's goconda.
You sure you're not confusing that with another project?
I don't see it.
Because I have from December 5th.
Yep.
The planning board would like public safety comments on the above project. We had several abutters with safety concerns on sightlines, traffic and how the fire department would be able to get in there if there was a fire. And then fire department comments were received. 1259, did you say?
P U N. P U N T.
Am I copied on that? I don't think it was forwarded to me either.
Sorry, I didn't read an issue.
Let's see, let's read this. Can you turn it a little bit this way?
Yeah.
It says, this is an email from Chris Dano, captain at the fire department. And he said, hi Pauline, I reviewed this with the chief and we don't have any concerns with these plans.
Perfect.
This building is so close to the street that we would just take over the street if there is an incident. This is a common practice. It looks to be access to three sides to the building, which is ideal for us. We have no issues or concerns. I have attached a site plan review form as requested. If anyone has questions, I am happy to address them. And what's the site plan review?
I knew we had done that.
All right. Well, Peter, that answers my question. Then I guess it takes here another one of the outstanding issues.
That's usually what happens with facilities like this, when they're near the street, they take command of the street because that's how they're going to do it.
Thank you.
Great minds, Lisa.
Sorry about that.
Oh, it's all right.
I think so.
So what is the wall and roof materials?
The foundation wall, concrete?
On the, the outside.
Oh, siding.
They need to comply with our.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I understand. We're, we're kind of at that point now where I probably will put a little bit more thought into that.
Okay.
As I said, I, I wanted to develop this further, but I needed to get some traction. I think we're going to, going to get into traction. So I know at one point we had talked about some, some masonry and then the, the last time I looked at it, actually, we looked at trying to just stick with materials, be they vertical or horizontal siding, mixtures. So there may not even be any stone whatsoever. That there probably would be a, either a veneer or a parjing of the exposed foundation, if there was any, just for appearance. But that's, that's.
So have you seen the design guidelines?
Yeah, I'm very familiar with them.
Okay.
Yep, yep. New England character, that sort of thing. So sure, we'll, we'll definitely be in line with that. Architectural shingles.
Okay.
A lot of things, you know, this whole, whole new building code may dictate very much what happens on the roof. Because depending on the timing, you know, the all-electric building may be what's in store. So.
Oh, really?
I'm just, just saying to you, that's what's happening and going down. So whatever it is, it will be. So we may have to have a roof that's just ready for solar panels, you know. I don't know what to tell you. I didn't write the building code. You have to follow it.
So there are 12 parking spaces required?
Yep.
But you're providing 21? If you provided less parking, would that reduce your, the lumen total?
I guess it would to some extent, probably make it worse. But at the same time, I, we want to have a successful project here. And I don't want to be overburdening the public parking spaces in the street. They're there, they're available. That's what people envision having for overflow parking. But I'm sure there'll be some businesses that would be upset with that, that they get displaced because now that there's residents there. So rather than create that situation, I just think it would make a more successful project to have more onsite overflow parking available. I don't, don't, rather than thought of having less parking, I'd certainly like to have more. But you have to make it fit and nine and a half foot parking space is your requirement and that's how many will fit. So.
Okay. But you, but, so more is good, but that's almost twice as much as what you need if there's a.
Not really. It's, it's, it's giving, you know, an extra one per unit, basically. So I think, I think it's still the right, it's the right ratio.
I'd like to see more green space.
There's a fair amount. Actually, there's a lot more than what you require at a minimum. I mean, I think we've done a good job with this property.
So the requirement of the landscape green space at the front, like, it's supposed to be 50% of the 20% of landscaping required, but there's, you just have, it's not called out how much is there and how much green space is there. So we don't.
So the, the trouble with this is it's, it's not really balanced, East Main to Newton. There's a, there's a lot less footprint on East Main, but it's. There's a lot less footprint on East Main, but it's recognizing East Main as being the front street versus Newton being the front street.
Yeah.
So, we are obligated to have a great deal of more along Newton, more than twice as much than we do along East Main. So, you just can't overburden it, is all I'm saying, is it's a balance. And I think we've done that balance, we've got our step back.
So, the thing is that I have to understand that it works, there are no numbers there.
Okay.
And there are no, so in the front, you just have planting boxes, and you need to have what exactly those plants are called out.
Okay, originally, we were looking at trying to create a plaza there when we were doing the mixed use. I actually wanted to have very little landscaping in the front, was, we were trying to create public space past the sidewalk. That's been eliminated now, and now it's just landscaping.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's...
So I just want to know what that landscaping is?
Okay, I can get you that.
And the trees are required to be a minimum of three-inch caliper?
I thought that got fixed, but if it's a carryover, I'm sorry. I thought it says three, three, three to three and a half now. Because there's several street trees that are along Newton Street, for sure.
And what's the enclosure of the dumpster, like what color of that?
There's a detail for that on there.
And is it like wood tone or white or...
It's a panel fence, it's probably shown as white on the plan, I frankly don't care what color it is.
Okay.
You know, we can go with an earth tone if that's the preference.
And there should also be a note on the landscape plan that the plants shall be the species identified, and any substitutions shall be approved by the town planner?
Okay. Yeah, I know we met the requirements, and you're right, it says two and a half, three, I thought it said three to three and a half, so I'll fix that. And then we'll put that note about substitutions.
And what's the sign made out of?
Excuse me?
Bless you.
Thank you.
It's really just a street marking sign now, before it was going to be a multi-tenant sign. So, I guess we could put a little bit more thought into that too, probably something that's going to complement the building.
Okay, and is there going to be any lighting pointing at it?
I'm not sure if it's needed, but we can work that out.
I mean, you don't have to, I just... Right, I just want to know if it is.
I'd rather have the parking lot lit than the sign.
Yeah. I'm not suggesting that, I just want to know if it is.
Fair enough, I would say no, I don't think I contemplated that.
I think that's it. Anyone in the audience have any questions or comments?
Steve Morrow, Morrow's Village Cafe, Two Main Street in Southborough. Two concerns with the project. First one, being that it's surrounded by two sides by wetlands. And now with six apartments there, if I'm correct, you're going to be adding 660 gallons of water a day into this area. And we already have water issues downtown as it is, and I think this is just going to elevate it even more. And then my second one is, the town of Southborough is known for its village districts. And I think that's what makes our town so different and so appealing to people. And to add this big of a building, 10 feet from the road, I think, is it two and a half or three stories high? In the village district, it's just going to change the whole character of the downtown. And I don't think it adds in a positive way, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Peter, I just noticed a couple things, just kind of cleanup of the plan. Submission number two, the architectural plans weren't stamped? So with the final...
They will be.
I don't think they're incorporated in the site plan though, right? I think the site plan set, the architectures are a separate exhibit.
They, right, they were the separate exhibit, but they can, they can be, because we'll develop it further, sure.
Okay, and then, it was missing the second-floor floor plan?
Yep.
It'd be good to have that on record, to show we...
No, we'll do that as well.
And then, I had a minor comment about the pre and post-development maps being a little bit illegible, but I think if Fussin O'Neil was able to review them, that's the purpose. You can't hear me? Oh, is this better? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, and the, so I just said the architectural plans needed to be stamped, and we were looking for the second-floor plan. And then the stormwater report, it was, what we received was a light, the PDF, something was too light, I remember making a comment. But I said Fussin O'Neil was able to review them, obviously, so...
Okay.
Okay. But the first two things, probably good to show clearer, stamp in the second floor.
All right.
Thanks.
So just to address the public comment, I mean, the two points, architecturally, I believe it's right in line with design review requirements. We're spot on, and this is the future of what the downtown is to look like, and so I'll stand by what we're, our approach. And then as far as the flow, you know, this is water that's been going down there in different forms. We're going to be controlling all of our stormwater onsite. Whatever any abutting property may not be doing properly, and may be affecting adversely these abutting properties, has nothing to do with me. Our site will be in compliance, and it will be fully controlled. So, that's just the way it is. I mean, these other sites weren't properly vetted, this site's been vetted. Ad nauseam, head points, but that's where we're at. So you can't, you can't deny the development of the site for what you feel. It has to be done properly, and it's been properly documented. Thank you.
And that's by law, you can't increase the water off of a, of a site.
Thanks Steve, I know that the DPW wrote an extensive memo to this board. That's also available on our website. Where they've reviewed all of the water flow and those issues. And he has basically suggested to us that the way that the plan has been presented, it will contain the water onsite. And that, yes, there are determination and challenges downtown, but that site can't fix that challenge, because he's required to do what he's doing on his site. But that DPW memo can be referenced on the website, and so that gave us confidence that, knowing he's an engineer and he was able to kind of look at the water flow, we know it's still a challenge. There's still some CSX and railroad issues that continue that can't be resolved. And we can't force the proponent to solve those challenges, so... Do you want to just go to the mic?
I'm sorry, you do have to go to the mic though, only because our recording clerk won't be able to pick up for the minutes.
So even as an abutter, I think that the point that what we are required as a planning board is that it meets the requirements of all of what he has to do to be able to demonstrate that he can contain the water and, on his property, which is done through the stormwater mitigation plan and through his plans.
So the runoff will not come out onto the road, it won't come out onto the tracks? So when there's a severe thunderstorm in the summertime, and it's pouring and it's hailing out, and that water is going to stay on that property?
So the DPW has basically said that water issue already exists.
Okay.
His should not...
Well, it's going to add to it, it's going to add to it, because right now, the soil absorbs what's there. Now you're going to pave it and you're going to have a runoff. So it is going to add to it, so I disagree with that.
I'm just going to say, by the way the plan was designed, we have comfort that he will control the site, the water flow within his own site. There are definitely issues downtown, I just don't think the proponent is, has to, has to fix those.
And my point would be is I don't have to fix Mr. Morrow's problem.
He won't be adding to those.
He should fix his own problem.
Yeah, we don't want to get into this, this right now. So I would, I would say if you haven't read that DPW memo, I would highly advise getting that on our website, or we can certainly give you the link to that. But it gave us comfort.
If you can find it, I'll find it for you if you contact me or come by, I'll make a copy. But it is in the packet from one of the previous meetings where we talked about it. You did, okay, good. Yeah, yeah, he's very helpful in explaining to. Thank you.
Anyone online with any question?
We have five attendees and no hands raised.
So the motion is to extend the public hearings for Two East Main Street, multifamily building, major site plan approval and special permit downtown district, to April 28th, 2025 at 7:10 PM.
Second? I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes?
Demaria, yes?
Brashio, yes?
Jesse, did that include the special permit?
Yep.
For the downtown district, you did it?
I said it.
Okay, thank you, making sure.
Thank you.
We don't need an extension on the decision.
Nope, it's brand-new start time, so we have a little time, May and June.
Thanks, Mr. Bemis.
I think you emailed me something, I gave it to me.
Yeah, that was erroneous, that was, sorry.
I just wanted to make sure that you did give it to you if you needed it, but, yep.
We would go back and default to this if we...
So we just need to quickly vote an extension for 250, which we forgot to do.
Right, so we're just going back to a previous agenda item for a moment to...
Just vote an extension.
Move to extend the decision deadline on 250 Turnpike Road, major site plan approval, special permit, lower impact development, to May 2nd, 2025.
Thank you.
Second? I have a motion and a second, any discussion, seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes?
Demaria, yes?
Brashio, yes?
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. 200 Turnpike Road, contractor facility modification to major site plan approval and modification to special permit, low impact development.
That's right, you're staying.
I am. You don't have to read anything, so...
He's here till midnight with us.
So Peter Bemis, engineer and design consultants, if I can approach?
Yeah, one second, do you have any update you want to?
So I did actually get a draft review comments, which we discussed earlier from Fussin O'Neil today, but there were some things missing, so Fussin O'Neil was going to provide a revised copy, and I let Peter Bemis know earlier today about that. So that should be coming probably tomorrow morning, if I don't have it already. And... We're going to talk about the trees. I can show there's no other comments here. We did get an email from the Board of Health saying that he had no comments. So, that's where we're at, sorry about the delay.
All right, thank you Peter.
So, I have some pictures.
Is that one set, or is that several?
So it's one set, because there's multiples, but I just thought, some board members haven't been to the site. Chair has been to the site, so I wanted to take the opportunity to be able to enlighten everyone. Acknowledge the fact that a tree was cut down that should not have been cut down. So I even took a picture of that and circled where that tree used to stand. Then there are a number of trees that looks as though a power company has cut. There is a power grid that does come through the Leeds property, and terminates on the subject property. So trees were cut there, there was, I think I sent you pictures via email of Lewis' tree removal onsite. And then apparently, there was some tree work being done at the transfer station as well, to some extent. I don't know anything on that or details. But there was a very large pine tree that's, that you can, I put a circle around the top of the tree, because they basically took the top off of it. Not our site, no one from our site did that work. And I don't believe that Lewis did that work either, to my knowledge. They may have, but they had, because there was no power line near it. But, but they did take the top off the tree. So, there are some older stumps that are along the town transfer station property. They were cut a long time ago, they're rotten at the surface, and there are some that are freshly cut. There's, so I showed you the trees that are down kind of near where the dumpster is on the site. It's not the permanent location, that's just a temporary location right now. Those look like they were done as part of the power grid. So, we definitely have to respond for mitigation for the tree that was cut that shouldn't have been cut. The, it doesn't appear to me that there's been any clearing from what I would call that dumpster point, if you will, right when you enter the parking lot on the right, down until you get to the back part of the lot. And I don't believe they necessarily cut any trees down, but the brush level that was there probably has been thinned out. Because it looks as though you can see right on to the transfer station property, and it could very well be that some transfer station property work was done as well. Long and short, there's really not much vegetation in that back, see, this would be the most southeastern point on the site. So if something has to be done there, I would say that it would be better maybe to be more shrub-based and tree-based, to be an effective screen in the short term, that's what we were trying to do. Or birch clump or something like that, that would be a more appropriate tree on that slope, and putting them more towards the top of the slope. But I'm here to discuss it, as far as trees are concerned. We did have a response back to FUS, and that pertained to many issues, but stormwater was really the only one that they had come back with, and having any further comments on.
Peter, I just want to just clarify for the planning board here, because there's three things happening here at the site, and I don't want to, some of these, I don't want to mix apples and oranges as far as the tasks. So, Peter is here for the modification of the site plan and the lid from the original permitting, because they joined the salt shed and the building addition into one building, removing the alley in between.
Yeah, we refiled totally for this.
That's right, and, and did the, some minor drainage...
We already opened all of it.
So, I understand, but I just want the planning board to be clear, it's nothing bad. It's nothing bad, I just want it to be clear.
Nothing can ever be bad.
So then, there's also an initial bond review that's happening by Fussin O'Neil.
Okay, I know where you're going now.
They are seeking their temporary certificate of occupancy for that building, and they can't get that without site plan compliance. So we have Fussin O'Neil reviewing the site, and they did a site visit already. And in conjunction with that, if you recall last fall, we engaged Fussin O'Neil to do construction phase assistance by doing some inspections at milestones, particularly before you paved. And at that time, it was found that there were some additional drainage components found, that they connected to the drainage system, but hadn't really included it in the report, the hydraulic, the stormwater report. So in doing that, Fussin O'Neil provided an inspection report and said, we need these things. Peter responded with some, Fussin O'Neil said, we still need X, Y, Z. Peter just did his final, I hope, third response to those construction phase comments. And granted, it's all the same project, but it's kind of three things happening at the same time.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I jumped right in, because I was just kind of picking up from where we left off, but FUS had, had, really only had two comments, and they were relative to the infiltration of the stormwater, because we addressed that section along the west side where the stormwater had deteriorated, that stormwater system we found had deteriorated. So we tied that into our existing network, and then they were saying, well wait a minute, you know, how do you account for that? Well, we, the math was there, it was there in the original calculations, and then we, it was there in the revised calculations. It's called stormwater standard three, and they just missed it. And I think that I would have gotten that letter back, but I think Karina pulled it because they missed something else. And that's good, because we wanted to get the trees clarified too, and that wasn't done. So, long and short is that I fully expect to have to continue tonight, but we're definitely on the, on the right road to close this out. What I was hoping to accomplish this evening however, was the trees, because I would like to get back a properly, a proper plan... because I would like to get back a properly, a proper plan for your consideration. So, now that you have the site plan up, the tree that got cut is that one on the entrance to the left, so this would be the northwest side of the driveway.
Right here.
Right there. So, I can just put another one of the proposed trees there. And the other areas that are landscaped along the south side are fairly good until you get to that southeast section, and there's three trees proposed there. And we can put those in like they're supposed to be at the toe. But what I was saying to you is that from the picture, you can see that I think it would be somewhat maybe more effective to do something more up slope if we're trying to really screen the transfer station property. And then, trying to put a tree like that wouldn't be the right vegetation, in my opinion. I'd rather get something that's going to be more bushy. Then, we could do an evergreen, but you know, it's going to take a long time for that evergreen to do much, whereas if you do a birch clump or something like that, you'd get a much more effective screen from it. So, but it would be seasonal. So, it's your call.
All set?
I am. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stein.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Ms. Houlihan.
Yeah, so thanks, Peter. So, just on the trees. So, it said, at least Jeremy said, that the one on the corner was removed during the original tree clearing because there was concern with low branches reaching out under the driveway, so with heavy equipment being used. So, if you replace it, aren't you just going to invite that same challenge in?
Probably. And there's another one right near it, but at the same time, I... Again, we called out something. We didn't ask for permission to do it, and it went, it happened. So, I feel like there's a penalty here, and you know, I'm trying to resolve that penalty component to it. And I'm open to doing whatever makes sense. You know, we can still put a tree there and just get one with a columnar shape. There are some trees that are very effective with that, and they're our natives. I want to say that I, the one that I put at East Main Street is one of those, so hang on. I'll tell you what it is.
And it's less penalty. It's saving the earth, Peter. This is what we're doing here, one tree at a time.
I think the sweet gum, there's a variety of the sweet gum that actually would be columnar. So, we can do that, but...
Would you just shift, I mean, could you shift the landscape? Like I'm saying, if you're going to add one in, don't put it in the same place if he removed it, right? Like, just shift it back, and we just, you know, put trees in? I mean, obviously, you want to have certain...
I was thinking of going to, because we didn't have an island on the right, on the... So, I was going to just suggest, let me put it on the south side. That's why I took a few more pictures over there. That's where the dumpster's sitting. I would rather just move it to the other side, and then I think it would balance better too. And then, it can be a regular crowning tree. I think we did a lot of pin oaks out there with that, and that's going to have a good-sized crown to it.
Yeah. Okay.
So, yeah, if I can shift it to the south, I would prefer that, just to offset that tree. And then, what we do again on the southeast is still up for discussion.
That's all I had.
Mr. Murray.
Thanks, Peter. Love talking about trees. If you want to plant more, that would be okay too.
Okay.
Thank you.
All set? Ms. Brashir.
Just more of a question, and I don't know. I wasn't on the planning board, and I don't know when this was done. It's a little confusing to me that on the south side, it shows maintain existing tree line, and that goes right up to the parking lot.
Yeah.
But in the pictures you gave us, it's like a hill, and there's no trees on the bottom half.
Yeah.
So, I'm confused as to why, if there weren't trees, the tree, the existing tree line would go all the way to the parking lot if it's not there or currently not there.
I don't have the grading plan in the set that I have. Is it possible to flip the sheet?
Yeah, we can get you the grading plan.
If you bring that up, and we'll maybe get a better understanding of what happened over there.
I guess I should have started with, "Thank you, Peter. I appreciate..." I should have started there, but I'm just curious why... If the tree line shows all the way to the parking lot, why it's...
Why they went up the slope. Again, it doesn't appear to me that they cut any trees because there's no stumps there or anything, but it was probably very brushy through there, and the brush probably didn't look good, so they took it out.
Okay. I was just curious.
But at the same time, that's why I'm saying I think we should do something there. And I think putting back something that's going to act more like brush would be more effective at the end of the day than to put, you know, we can still put the few pin oaks at the bottom of slope. I'm fine with that. But doing something with the slope that's more appropriate would be better.
Okay. Thank you.
My favorite subject. Yes, so they did, there was vegetation right to the parking lot, and it's been cleared, and the roots are like sticking out. I don't know how healthy that is for the remaining trees. And there was an 18-inch pine that was down closer. It's not the one in the picture that's been topped that was to remain.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
And one, two, three, four 10-inch trees that have been removed.
That were all identified along that stretch?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I don't remember all of that. Oh, up in the... Oh, see, that's what I'm getting at. Those, I went out there to look for those, and that's what I'm saying to you is I can't, I don't think that they cut them, nor can I find evidence of them.
Well, but it's been all, the whole side's been all clawed apart.
That's further down, though, Mimi. That's why I wanted to meet you there.
No, it's all the way, all the way down, the whole side, the whole south side.
Okay. All right, well, again, I, as I said, I gave you that picture. I'm, you know, basically saying I think we should do something there, so I'm agreeing.
Just to give Mimi some more insight?
Few trees.
Just so you're aware, Fussin O'Neil is addressing three areas of concern of the landscaping after my conversation with them today to ask, "What did you see out there? Do you have any pictures? What is it like now?" Because you didn't address that piece that I asked. So, they're going to make a comment on this area right here on the south side. They're going to comment on this tree, and then up here in the top corner, if you scroll down a little, they weren't as concerned up in that corner because you have a tree line here. And when I asked Jimmy, the engineering inspector, what he saw up here, if that was any concern, he said he would look at that, and he said he didn't think that was as much of a concern because some was removed here, but there was still enough here to provide some buffer, whether it's required or not. But it was this tree in the southern side that he's going to opine on in their final review.
Okay.
Because he had pictures of everything, and he met with you out there, so...
Right. I just know when the initial cut was done, they didn't go up into that area, and that's what just strikes me is that they, we definitely showed those trees. Zach located them, so I'm not doubting that.
I thought there was a little bit cleared in that southern side.
Yeah. I just, they didn't have an activity there, and I just can't imagine the town went on the other side of the wall. It's pretty evident where it's rubble. It wouldn't be hard to go on the other side, but I can't imagine they would either. So, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but again, what would you think is appropriate?
You're saying the town did that?
No, no, I'm not. That's what I'm saying. That was the way the email came back. Was I had, we've had no presence there to know whether or not. Lewis was there, definitely had to clear what I think would have been the wires. And then, there was some other activity there. There was another group there from John Crandall's representative. And so, I just took that on face value. And now that you're showing me the trees that you were questioning, I'm like, there's just no way they would have cleared those. You know what I'm saying? It's like, they might have cleared some brush along the lot line, but they never would have gone on the other side. So, so...
Oh, no, no, no.
So, those trees definitely came down.
Right. Yeah.
Then, what, I guess, let's just discuss what is appropriate there. From, you've seen the site. It's a slope.
So, yeah, it's going to be difficult, but it needs a 20-foot landscape buffer. And, you know, 10 and 12-inch trees are, you know...
Yeah.
Hard to replace.
I don't disagree. They probably didn't give a lot of cover there, unfortunately, because of their size. And being a pine, they probably had, you know, they were limbed at the bottom. They probably were higher. So, you know, we can put something that's going to be, you know, a little bit bushier there. I'm fine with that. I'd rather see evergreens. But just getting up that slope.
Just not green giant arbor varieties.
Okay. Okay. Try to keep them all native. All right, I'll come up with a plan for that.
I think that's, that's all I got.
Okay.
And Peter, as soon as that comment letter comes in from Fussin O'Neil, I'm expecting it. If it's not there now in the morning, I'll send it to you as soon as it comes.
Okay. All right, so if we're going to continue this to the 28th as well, I think we're very, very close to being able to get this done. I know he's, I told him that he had to make a decision. You know, he had to order this building because they, getting a steel building now all of a sudden get very expensive because of tariffs, and he had no choice but to pull the trigger. Because I said to him, "You don't have a choice." I said, "I have a very good feeling about you getting approval, so go ahead and pull the trigger." But it was, yeah, if he didn't do it that day, it was going to be very expensive. It was 25% more.
Oh, already? And the tariffs don't even go in yet?
On what it was from the delivery, yeah. They were holding a price quote that they had given him because the tariff already had gone into effect. But they had given him a quote. So, long as he fulfilled his contract by that date, they would fulfill it.
So, the one other thing, and I know I mentioned this before, was the note on the landscape plan that plans substitutions due to availability may be made with approval of town planner.
It's not on that one, on this one either?
I don't...
Okay, then we'll make sure the note follows them both, then. It should just be a standard note now.
Yes. All natives, no substitutions without town planner approval.
Okay.
Mr. Stein.
So, I moved that we continue the public hearing for 200 Turnpike Road Contractor Facility Modification to Major Site Plan Approval and Modification for Special Permit for Lower Impact Development to April 28th at 7:15 PM.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Bush.
Bush.
Houlihan?
Yes. Demiria, yes.
Brashir, yes.
And further motion to extend the decision deadline. It's listed currently at April 20th for Major Site Plan Approval.
I'm fine with that, clearly.
So, the motion is to extend the decision's deadline for 200 Turnpike Road Contractor Facility Modification to Major Site Plan to May 20th, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Brashir, yes.
Formal extension to sign.
You want to do it tonight, or you want to do?
I'm going to see you anywhere. We'll email it to you.
Okay, all right, very good. Yeah, I'll have it to you. All right, thank you.
It's voted already. That's what's...
Okay. Don't go anywhere, Mr. Bemis. Well, that's what I wanted to find out, whether it was going to be dismissed when we were done.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. 26 Meadow Lane Reservoir Meadows, Major Site Plan Approval, Special Permit Low-Impact Development, and Special Permit Major Residential Development. And Karina will bring us up to date.
All right, we have a few things here. So, cut to the chase. We received comments from a Butters. I believe one was from, hold on a second. The Charbonneau's, correct? Dennis and Bree Charbonneau regarding 26 Meadow Lane Development, a Butter, questions and concerns. And we also received an email from Kyle Dumont. He didn't identify his address. I don't know if he's here tonight.
I think it was 20 Meadow.
He is 20, okay. 20 Meadow Lane? Okay, sorry. I couldn't find it in the nosy book. So, these comments were forwarded to the planning board to review and to discuss this evening. The other thing we received was an email with a cover letter from Peter wanting to discuss a couple of options for the project, which we received Friday, which is kind of close to tonight's meeting. So, we probably didn't have a chance to review it or not. So, it's up to the planning board what they plan to discuss. But we did receive the comments and this informational package to discuss. And this project...
Welcome, Mr. Bemis.
Great. Good evening. Yeah, again. So, Peter Bemis, Engineering Design here on behalf of 39 Pine Thelmoth and William and Christine Putre, who is the owner and applicant. So, what I was hoping to do tonight was just talk about three topics because these are the topics that are central to the project and how it would advance. We're kind of stuck between having to refund another peer review and, because we've changed the project. And in order to advance the project properly, I think if we could just get these three issues out of the way or at least have a better understanding of them tonight, it would make the process much easier for all of us. And then, I did take the time. I, on Friday, got the comments from the Butters and responded to those today. If there's, if those Butters want to go through any of the items that were addressed specifically, we can. Every item that they wrote, I put their question down and answered it so that you wouldn't have to be tracking between two documents.
And did they get copies of those, that your response?
I gave them to your office, figuring that you were the conduit for it to go out. So, what was emailed to Karina, I hope that she sent them.
So, the comments from the residents are in the meeting packet on the town website.
Oh, there you go.
But your responses are not, and this packet is not as well, right? The packet with the options is not in the...
So, maybe we should go through the questions and the comments.
Okay, I think I can do it pretty quickly.
Mimi, can I just ask if the Charbonneaux are here? They're, okay. Thank you, Marney. I was going to do the same thing.
I brought extra copies too. And then, is Mr. Dumont here?
No, we asked already.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear that. Oh, sorry. So, I'd start with the three questions, and then we can go into the questions. So, the first point that I wanted to raise was conventional lot development because that's the basis of the project for a major is that we have to have established what is the conventional development plan. And our plan showed a subdivision road with the, with five lots on it, and no one's really taken issue with that. The geometry of one of the lots was six that everyone was concerned about. And so, with this approach that we've taken is we've just taken the 39 Pine Thelmoth piece out. That's where there's an easement granted to an abutting group of properties. That's where their septic system is. So, by just taking it out completely, we thought would just eliminate the issue of whether it's part of a lot or not part of a lot. And then, there's another small wedge called Parcel A that's left in between. And if we were to try to pass the circle through that to get to the rear lot line, it wouldn't work. So, we've said, "Let's just take that out completely." So, Parcel A is removed, and we would just deed it to an abutting property, be it Pine Thelmoth or be it a Butter that's not affiliated with the project. We can still just sever the lot off. So, then Lot 6 itself now stands on its own. It has frontage. It has area. It meets the geometry question about the circle that has to pass from frontage to rear lot. And there are wetlands on it, and there's a lot of wetlands, but it does not exceed the wetland threshold in zoning. And there is a place for you to be able to put a building here. Be it all very ugly-looking, it would still work. And so, all I'm seeing is that in the requirements for major residential, major residential development, it sets a bar, and the bar isn't necessarily all the way up here that says, "You have to show us this house in fully functioning." It says, "No, you need to be able to show us that the lot meets the requirements of zoning." It says, "No, you need to be able to show us that the lot meets the requirements of zoning," which I believe it does. So that would be my perspective on it, is that the conventional lot development does establish six lots for the project, it does meet the requirements. And if we were to submit an approval not required plan for that lot, it would be endorsed. Or it would be constructively approved if the board elected not to endorse it. So that's the first point that I would make. The second is relative to the six lot development option now. So there was a separate exhibit for that where we took all of our open space that we have available on the project, but now took 39 Pine Falmouth out of the equation again. So we're not looking at it at all. Because there's 3,000 square feet of it that is a primary soil absorption area and there's 3,000 square feet of it that's a reserve area. And if we add them both in and say, "Now that lot's not viable," or, excuse me, I'm going to say five. If we take that 6,000 square feet and then say that you can't count that, you, the formula, the way it's set up for compliance of open space would make it so that it is not effective any longer to roll it in. It's like a disadvantage. So we would take that out. So that, in doing that, our total open space would go down to 59.4%, which is 1% less than we had previously.
So by taking it out, it's no longer part of the lot?
It's no longer part of the project any longer. So I'm taking 39 Pine Falmouth out on the conventional plan? I'm taking it out on the sixth lot?
So, but it's just taken out on paper, it hasn't been A&R'd out of that, so the lot is.
No, it's already A&R'd out. It's already A&R'd out. We brought it in, so if you recall, back when we started this whole thing, it wasn't part of the project. We were trying to get, our goal has always been to try to get as much open space as possible here. That's been the way I've wanted to see this happen. And to take a step back, it's because of what this use was. It was an airstrip, that's not a necessary use. But itself, it seemed like we had three of them. Okay, we got rid of one of them already where the driving range is. This is the second one, there's one more still, maybe someday that one will go away. But it just didn't seem to make sense, it would be right. So we're trying to correct that history. So by trying to get as much of this open space back into the equation, I thought was the best approach. So 39 Pine Falmouth stands on its own, it's already separated out, and we'll leave it out. If you're going to be brief, I would like to finish, and you can say whatever you want, Bill, because I have mixed givings about this, you know that.
I understand. It's not 3,000 square feet, the septic system, it's 8,000 square feet, that's a typo. So the septic system's 8,000 square.
Okay, so it's eight, whatever, I know the math doesn't work. So maybe that was the mistake, is I wrote that in wrong, so I apologize. So the bottom line here is that the exhibit that we've given you for six lots takes out the Pine Falmouth. And the net result is that we're going to go down to 59.4% open space. So we're not going to be over 60, but we didn't need to be. But the goal was to try to get to that number, in my mind. But we're 1% less than where we were previously. The, if for some reason someone's going to say that we don't have a six lot option and that we're a five lot option now, we're going to go back to what we had had before. And in doing so, we bring the affordable uni, excuse me, affordable. We bring the duplex unit back out to the front. That's the only way Mr. Putre will do this project. And the problem with that, it's not even a problem. The net result of that is that the open space will go down to 57%, which is now 2% less than what we had had with the five unit program. But it's over 2% less than the six unit program. So it's still a lot of open space, it still meets the formula. But we just, we have to pick. We can't, we can't just leave this open any longer. I can't redesign everything over again. This is the third time that we've designed this fully. And that's a lot. Because there's a lot of moving parts to this, it's 10 sheet set, and I just don't want to do it again. So I would say that, I firmly believe that we've shown constructively that we have a six lot development, that we should be talking about six lots. And therefore, the six lot option is the better option, in my opinion. And we put the two duplexes in the back and we create the most amount of open space that we can here. And then we can talk about how we define that open space, but let's just focus on the concept of open space. If you're not, if you're reluctant to support the sixth lot, and it has to be five, then we're going back to putting the duplex in the front, we're going to have a little less open space at the end of the day. The project will work, we have to redesign it again. That's what's going to happen. So I'll answer the Butters' questions after we talk about those three issues. Thank you.
Mr. Stein.
So which of those two is going to create less disturbance, you know, ecologically? That's the part that has been sort of a hangup. This whole time is concerns by the Butters on drainage and how it's going to impact.
Personally, I think the less impact is the horseshoe road that you see there in front of you. Because stormwater is addressed in a better manner. The development is concentrated. The duplexes where the, are the biggest activity, if you will, they're at the back. They're on, they're well on the site, whereas the frontage along Meadow Lane is less impactful. I personally would prefer to see it developed that way. I like the plan a thousand times better than the other, but I get it. If we can't say the sixth, then we have to go back to the other alternative.
Mr. Stein, can I also add to that? And that is, first of all, 39 Pine Falmouth is a separate entity, that lot, that I am the sole member of, that LLC that owns that. Essentially, we took that out because there was a bunch of concerns from the neighbors. They complained, they talked about their reserve area, whether we were going to count that reserve area, whether we weren't going to count that reserve area. The reality is, we don't need it for the project, so let's just take it out. It takes their concern away. So that was one of the big concerns they had, was can we count open space over a reserve area? Which the bylaw states that the planning board has the ability to do that. But you asked about what makes the, is the path of least resistance, basically, is what you were asking. So the first thing we did was say, "All right, take 39 Pine Falmouth out, we'll make up the open space elsewhere." And now we don't have to have that concern of whether reserve areas can count in open space or whether they can't count in open space. So that is the first thing we did. The second thing is with the two duplexes in the back, excuse me, with the single in the back, we would only, we wouldn't have the loop road, but we would have almost like a hammerhead looking type thing that fit the definition for that turnaround for the fire department. So in the, a few of the neighbors had asked, they wanted the duplex unit. They would have preferred the duplex units in the rear. So that's why we went to the six unit piece, to put the duplexes in the rear. If we only have five, it changes the loop road and the amount of permeable surface that would be utilized. Because if I had five with a duplex in the back, I have three driveway entrances into the rear. That doesn't make any sense, it doesn't make economical sense and it's not needed non-permeable area. So our position is, we would prefer to go to the six. We think that that's a better project. We think that the duplexes in the back, which is what some of the neighbors asked for, we took 39 Pine Falmouth LLC, which is already A&R'd out, it's a separate, its own separate lot. And the, we believe that's the, and it gives you more open space. So more open space, nothing on their, on their septic area, units in the back. If, those are the biggest requests that we heard. And we tried to, we spent a lot of money trying to get those things accomplished. As Peter said, he's done this yet another time and it's cost me a lot of money and I've got to write more checks out too, to meet those responses. If we are not granted that sixth lot and are down to five, we're forced to go back to the first plan. Which I don't think is what the neighbors want. I don't, I think they would prefer this one because the majority of them talked about wanting the duplex in the back. The only way the duplex works in the back is if we put two back there, doesn't work with one back there.
Okay, so it seems to like that the six unit is the lesser.
I personally like it better and I like 50, I like keeping 39 Pine Falmouth in the equation because I don't think that we're overburdening that land. That's how we presented it to you last time. I'm just saying, tonight I took it out because I wanted to make it so you could see what it looks like with or without. You'd understand it. Because the way your bylaw is drafted, it says you cannot, you don't have, you do not count the primary. You have the discretion over the sec, over the reserve. So reserved can or cannot count, you would then select. We get more open space, it was like almost 65, 60.5%, I think was the number.
So it can be counted and we have the discretion of whether it's counted to meet the minimum? So if you have 60, it's not being used to meet the minimum required, which is 55?
It's not being used.
No, that's right, right, it's your option, right. That's what I'm trying to say, is I'd rather, I'd rather get as much as we can here because from my perspective, there shouldn't have been a runway here to begin with. So that's where I'm coming from when I start this discussion.
We're willing to give more space, but if you're going to, if it's going to count against us, then why bother? We're not going to give something that then becomes a negative. We can either give it and that's fine, or take them out of the equation and don't give it and we still meet the minimums.
And in the overall, the properties managed, there's going to be an HOA here? You, first, you folks have to come to terms with a special permit for this, but the condition is going to be an HOA. The HOA has to have management systems built in to maintain this. And how we maintain this open space, because that's a lot of the questions from the Butters. We're not going to go in there and cut down trees. I know the, one of the first plans that Zach prepared, it said mowing of the open space. He was, what it should have probably said was, "Anything that's already open can be mowed." And I would say to you that some of the lands probably even don't want to be mowed now because they've already started to revert to recessional forest. Let them just keep foresting. But the areas that we want to maintain as a meadow should be cut. Or, because if you don't cut it, it will just turn into a forest. You just got to, it's just going to take time.
In some of the areas, we want to be usable, like look inside that horseshoe. It's perfectly acceptable to use something as a, kind of like an open park type setting. You wouldn't want to have just grass growing randomly in the middle of that back horseshoe. You'd want that nicely kept, but open.
So we're going to go through the rest of the board, obviously, and whatever preference, so if quote unquote comes out of this, if one does, I mean, you guys have to acknowledge that that is not an endorsement or approval in any way at all.
I know that.
And we have to go through our normal diligence, peer reviews, et cetera.
It's just no time, that's the problem that I have, is that your tenure on the board is limited. And we recognize that and appreciated you bringing that up at the last meeting and that's why I just said, these issues need to be discussed tonight so that we can focus on what we're going to do going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Houlihan.
Thank you, hello. So I would prefer the, again, I think that the resolution or the conversations that you've addressed some of the neighbors with a lot of those concerns. Like I still maintain very, I'm worried about the ecological effect. And so if you're suggesting that the duplex in the back and the horseshoe helps to minimize that and being able to demonstrate that, obviously, through the plan, Stormwater and through Fussin' O'Neil or whoever we're using for this review. Regarding 39 Pine, so I guess I'd prefer it to be part of the open space parcel because I don't also want an open parcel that has an opportunity to, I don't know, I don't know what would happen to this land. But I'd rather have it donated for the open space portion of it. I guess the question is, how does that impact the residents who have that as reserve? And I don't, I don't know from a.
They have the right, in other words, they benefit, they have a benefit to that land, but they don't have, they don't own the fee, Mr. Putre does. And their benefit is limited to the soil absorption system that's on it. But Mr. Putre then has the ability to incorporate it into the development, which then would be managed by that HOA. That's what I like about it too. That's why I would rather lump all this in and get as much as we can, I wish there was some more.
The other option, and I've given them this option, and this has been going on for a year and a half. I gave them the option of I would sell that to the 11 homeowners for $1. You guys can have it, how about that? You were worried about your septic system, I'll give it to you for a dollar. They said, "Well, we don't want the tax burden." I went to Paul and said, "Paul, if we stamp that not a buildable lot, what's the tax bill going to be?" He said, "$353 a year." So out of 11 people, we're dealing with $2 a month. They said, "No, we still don't want it." So it's a no-win situation for me. I don't know if I want to include it in the project because I don't know if I want to give it to those homeowners, to the new homeowners, to deal with the other homeowners that are constantly thinking it's an issue or a problem. I'd either rather give it to them for a dollar or leave it out of the project entirely and not have to burden new homeowners with it.
But let's just play this all the way out, then you're burdened with it. So you have to maintain whatever happens for the reserved property.
That's fine, I don't care. I'm just trying to keep the burden away from others. There's potentially six more families. Do I want to pass a burden that I have on to six other families? Just like none of us, I don't think any of us want to pass a burden that we have on to six others in any capacity.
The only thing to recognize is there's an easement to it and they have the right of access over the easements to it. But I, again, leaving a parcel sitting out there on its own is just not a good idea. It should be connected to something, so.
Yeah, I completely agree, it should be connected to something. And then the easements, again, like just the challenges, I know we talked about putting asphalt over the easement, the utility easements and like all those challenges. It definitely worries me, but I'm going to leave that up to the engineers to review that and all of the requirements associated. But I guess I would, to Mr. Stein's same point, I would probably support the double duplex in the back. Not saying I'm, you know, going to endorse the plan.
Can I just say one thing about that? The pipe already goes underneath the runway, okay? They've been landing planes on that, they've been driving on that. We're eliminating that and having an area that you only drive car, a car over for a driveway. In addition, if you look at the topography, the, where they'd be driving this car, the car over, there's 12 feet of cover, it's 12 feet underground. As opposed to the back, there's only five feet of cover, just because of how the topography works. So the reality is, we're not landing planes on, the current situation was, planes can land on it and cars can drive on it. Now we're just having two duplexes driving on a driveway. It's not going to have an impact and it loops out the other way also.
Thank you, Mr. Maria.
Oh, I have to agree, I think that including the reserved property is a more full picture of what, you know, what's going on, I guess. And if that makes it more favorable for open space, I would support that. And, you know, the first night that we opened the hearing and there were a lot of neighbors that were concerned with the duplex in the front. And, you know, some of those neighbors didn't come back when you changed the design to put the duplex in the back. So I really think that was a clever idea. I personally like it as well, I think it solves some of the problems. So, you know, I would, I would support like continuing along that line and following up with the rest of the comments.
Ms. Rashir.
Thank you, just a process question first. So I feel the same way of things that have been said. But my question is, by saying that's the path, we're agreeing that with the sixth lot in the conventional plan? Okay, I just want to be clear on that. So that being said, I also like this plan, again, not endorsing the plan, but with the duplexes in the back, with the housing crisis we have. plan, but with, with the duplexes in the back, with the housing crisis we have, um, I'll leave it at that. I think it, it works. Um, I, I would, could be supportive of this.
Thank you.
So, I can't get past.
Trying to get you there.
So, the number of lots or units excluding bonus lots or units allowed in, under subsection F, shall, shall, that's non-negotiable.
I'm with you.
Not exceed the number of lots in the conventional plan, which shall be in full compliance with zoning subdivision regulation and health codes. So, this is a subdivision not lot, not an A and R. A and R, you just look at frontage. But there isn't vital access on this lot. You can't get to the buildable portion of the lot. The, that, the wetlands is twenty feet from the, the lot line. You can't drive over the no-touch area. So, I don't know how this is a, a, a conventional subdivision lot.
Because you're at, you're adding that dynamic to it, and I don't believe that that's what the standard says. It, it's not stating that you have to take it that far. That dimensionally, it does meet the zoning requirements. So, that's, that's, this is interpretation. That's all I'm saying, is that the zoning interpretation, I believe, is that, does it comply with those provisions? And it does. I don't have to actually show its buil- buildability. I don't have to put its building envelope on the plan.
No, but it has to have, um, vital access.
Right, but it, it does. It does. It comes off, we, we have access off a valley road.
To the buildable portion of the lot.
Correct, and I, and I do, without crossing a wetland, but I do go into a buffer zone. So, I, I, I would be required to get a permit for that, and I can mitigate that impact. I don't have to fill any wetlands to do it, but I am gonna go into a buffer zone. And then, and, and Southboro does have a provision that they do have a protected resource area there, but it doesn't mean that it's, it's unsupported by...
They'll let you drive on the twenty-foot no-touch?
If, 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 if I prove that that's the only way that I have access to that portion of the site, yes. That's what I'm saying to you, is that I would then replicate or mitigate that impact. Or, or, or maybe determine that it would be better to cross the resource area through, through, again, a vetting process, to say that this would be the most, at, or the most beneficial place to do this, because we could set aside this other area and, and make it more beneficial. That's all. I'm just saying that there's a process for it. It's not a total prohibition. This, so, you're just, you're taking it a step past what I think that the bylaw was set up to do.
And I, I believe the bylaw says, it doesn't say "buildable lot." It just says "lot." Says approve, you have to prove the amount of lots. It doesn't say, and there are uses that you can use within those lots that wouldn't prohibit you from staying in the front. For example, it says in our residential B, that, that what is permitted is anything that's allowed in conservation or residential A. Those could be business trailers. They can be without a permit, right, by use. They can be, there are many different uses that we could leave right out there and keep our setback, side setbacks, and be fine. Um, you can have farm stands. You can have, it doesn't say "buildable lot," but there are buildable...
Well, so, Mass General Law, the reason for, the purpose of a subdivision to, is to ensure adequate access to lots in the subdivision. Adequate access is access from a way to the buildable portion of the lot. That's subdivision control.
Right, so taking that, so, let's just say that we, say we were fronting on, on a limited access highway here. That, that definitely wouldn't work, so I would agree with you.
So, let me save you some breath here. I think you sold me, Peter.
Okay.
So, don't oversell.
Okay. I won't.
But I'm just wanted to...
No, let's get through it.
Wanted to, to be clear, that that is what subdivision is about, is access to the buildable portion of the lot.
I'm, I'm, I'm agreeing with you on that.
Okay.
I'm agreeing with you on that.
So, um, the wetlands is kind of beyond our jurisdiction, but if you're saying that that is possible, then I will, I will...
Okay, 'cause that's what I'm gonna say. I could, I could get a perm, a valid permit to be able to come in through my frontage and get to my buildable portion of the lot. And, and, and albeit that, if I came to you and this whole thing was all wetlands, I'd say, "Yeah, hooey, it doesn't work." Or if my percentage didn't meet that requirement, because there is a restriction that you can only have so much percentage of wetlands. We don't do that either. We're well in excess of it.
You're sold.
Okay, okay.
Six, six it is. Don't oversell.
All right.
I learned that at Dale Carnegie.
So, then, I just feel like this, this is a better project for us to be advancing. So, so thank you for that. And then, I would be happy to answer, or go through these questions.
Yes, please.
Quickly, okay. Um, so, the, the Chabonos had the, the most amount of questions, and they were fairly concise, so I'll, I'll try to be, um, brief with them, and rather than read the whole thing out. Um... Oh, you're gonna put it up? That's even better, great. That's it, yeah. Yeah, so, so, so the first point, um, they were concerned about the requirements for the area, and what was happening is, again, we were, we were moving from our revisions. So, R zero and R one, the total land area for the project was three hundred and forty thousand, six hundred square feet. Say again? That's the right letter. Yep. And then, R two, R three, um, was three seventy-two ninety, and then R four is three seventy-nine, oh ninety. So, it was just a matter of math. So, we, we, I just wanted the Chabonos to have the exact numbers. They were asking that. Um, and then the next was what we just talked about, was the number of dwelling units to, for flexible. So, that's been explained, you know, much further, that, um, we are allowed two-thirds as multis, um, and six was our total number of units here. So, that's how that math shakes out. Um, item C was, uh, the common open space, um, on the drawings, and, and again, from our perspective, if it's, if it's wooded today, it should stay wooded. That's the protection that's gonna be there. With the board's permission, and only through the board's permission, will there be mowing of any of this area. Um, if, if you just, if you determine that you'd rather just see the open space go back to its natural state, that's gonna be a forest. Um, so, that's what's gonna happen here. So, that's either the board says, "We're gonna mow those areas," or "We're not gonna mow those areas." Let's see here. The next was the, um, they were concerned about, oh, the slope adjacent to their property. So, um, and the plant, and governance. How, who, how is this gonna be governed in, in specifically? So, the board's decision is the record. The plans are the record. Um, we, as the designers, you know, we, we would expect to stay involved in the project, but if they're, if we're not, um, and someone else comes along, they would have to follow the decision. They would have to follow the plans. They, they are, um, how this is created. And, and then also, it, nothing would go forward without the HOA documents. Um, so, there's another, um, protection that's in there for the, for the neighbors.
Are you talking about D?
Uh, I was talking about E. Did I skip one? Oh, D. All right, sorry. For the easement. All right, wait a minute. D. Oh, the sewer easement. Oh, I didn't mean to skip that one. So, there's a sewer easement that goes through their properties, uh, both twenty and twenty-two. Um, that easement is, uh, ex- explained in, in their deed that they received. Um, so that easement was reserved, and they can only be changed through mutual consent, and it would have to be recorded consent as well. It can't just be done verbally. Um, so, whatever's, the way that's drafted today, doesn't change. I'm not affecting it in any manner with this project. So, they're protected.
So, that does say that, um, it's required to restore as closely as possible to the existing condition, following any grading, excavation, or filling.
Agreed.
It says in the, right in the easement.
Yep, yep. And I would assume that, you know, they're going through someone's property. They put fences up at this point, so the fences would have to come down. They would do the work activity. They would store the area. I think they could do that in a very, um, concise and, and managed manner. Um, F. So, this is regarding the hangar. Um, and they were concerned about, uh, could there have been, potentially have been any, any leakage there. Uh, so, I could only respond to this, because we, we, we didn't do any work, so we weren't directly involved in it. Um, and then, the only thing I would have stated was that, I knew Peter personally. Um, he, you know, he was someone who was a longstanding member of the community, and it's just, the guy was the environment, the environment, the environment. So, I just would say, there's just no way...
He was one of the founders of the Southboro Open Land Foundation.
Yeah, yeah, there you go. I was just gonna say, he's just not one of those kind of people, but they don't have the benefit of that knowledge. So, with that said, Mr. Putre did all of the work, so he can explain himself.
So, so two things to answer to that. One was when we bought the property, there's seller disclosures of whether there were any hazardous materials there, of which we were, we, it was disclosed, we, they were not. So, that, that's the first thing. The second thing with regards to taking it down, I did work with the building, uh, department at the time. It's not the current building inspector. I forgot her name. Laurie?
Laurie, yeah.
Laurie. And we, we did the dig-safe stuff. There were no utilities in it. There was no electric in it. There were no plumbing in it. It was just, it was a, just literally a concrete barrier, and it was, it was tied down with nails, and, and she just said, "Yeah, you can, you can take that. Just make sure you do the dig-safe and so forth." And that's what we did. And the seller disclosure took care of the fact that I have no knowledge of anything that was there. They disclosed there was no hazardous materials stored in there. We didn't find any hazardous materials stored in there when we, when we got there. So, that's, that's the information we have.
Okay. Um, so G was concerned about the plant material that we would put on the abutting property. Um, you know, we did a preference, and it, it will still be my preference after, um, even tonight, would be the green giants, because they can be managed and pruned. Um, they are just a gr- a very good plant, and the deer don't eat them. However, it may very well be that we don't end up doing that plant material, and we use a native. Um, and it may not grow as effectively, and that may address the concerns the Chabonos have, but long and short is that whatever gets put there can be maintained, and they can control that, so their side doesn't get affected. There are some trees that are inappropriate for that location. Certainly, you know, a white pine or spruce or something that's gonna grow way beyond that size and can't be pruned easily, I would definitely not say that those could be put there. Uh, but there are others, there are others that can be, and I, I would say that we can just stand on that.
You just love those green giants.
I do, only because I just, I've, and I love the ones that are next door to my office. I just, I, I, I look at them every day, and they, they still amaze me. If they had just kept go, if they had just kept going with them, it would have been great. They get full sun, they do well. Um, so, the next point was the, uh, on H. They were concerned about the HOA, um, and, and again, the management of the site. And that, I think that's the one thing they have, could be less concerned about, because this board has already granted approval in the past for, uh, a major residential development. The HOA is an integral part of the decision, and there, there's just no getting around it. Um, that, there's a, there's a recorded document, and they will be protected as abutters. Oh, so we're asking about renderings. Mr. Putre, you could probably answer this one. Um, so, we provided you with the drawings that we had, uh, for the duplex, uh, whether you were willing to do anything else for the other structures, um, because that wasn't there. So, do you wanna answer that one further?
I, I would say, just on timing and so forth, I'm trying to get the project moving, and, you know, I, I, I have no problem. I've shown them pictures of, of what we were going to put in here. They have a copy of the duplex plans. I gave them the copy of the duplex plans they were gonna put in front. Um, so, they, they, they have those plans. Um, I literally left them with them on their kitchen table. So, um, they have the, the, that as far as the houses that are in the front. I don't have plans for that yet, but we've got foundations, and they're all gonna, everything will fit within the, the, the neighborhood. I think to hold up, um, this, which we, we're not required to have full elevations on buildings for permitting, I, I, it will just extend the process. But the houses that we've built there, we've put three houses up. They're all beautiful homes. They're all the same, inclusive of theirs.
So, you're building something similar to what you've already...
It will absolutely look like, the, the whole point of this is to have that beautiful, modern farmhouse look. That we've put, three houses have been built there. They, they fit in very nicely together, if anyone's been up there, and it, it will continue.
So, you could put that in your decision to, to mimic the, the other homes that were built. Uh, that, that answers all of the Chabonos' comments. So, now it was, uh, Mr. Dumont's comments. So, his first was regarding satellite imagery. Um, and he had given you a number of exhibits where he was overlaying the satellite imagery onto our, our plans. And, I, I, for the life of me, I've, I've never had this circumstance come up, but I was like, "Okay." Um, we survey everything. Um, it's all ground survey. Uh, when we don't have access to someone's property, which can, is quite common, we, we have a, a device with our, our survey instrument where we can actually take a shot on the corner of a building and get an accurate distance. It's called reflectorless distance measuring. So, um, we can do that. We don't have to enter onto someone's property to get the location. So, any buildings that are adjacent to us, n- never mind our own sites, on our own site, where everything is, is accurately measured. And we're doing this, um, to a level of precision that are, you know, hundredths of a foot. Um, and, and, and Mr. Dumont was trying to take aerial imagery from either Google Earth, or, or, uh, Maps, or one, one of these other websites, and trying to overlay them. You just can't do that. That's not what we do. Um, and no one should be designing anything that way either. Uh, what we, we also do, however, um, and to his point, is that we take mass GIS data and we get shape files from, from their database. So, anything on the properties that are beyond that, we'll use that, and that's particularly beneficial for stormwater calculations, uh, because you need to know what the density is of the residential development that's near you or the industrial project, so that you can look at the overall watershed that's contributing. And that's, again, standard practice. Um, some people do it on even lesser scales. Uh, we don't do it that way. We do it with that information. You get it. It's in the database that you see from us, and that's what the peer review gets. But back in the days, we used to just take USGS maps and make determinations that way. So, um, the level of, of information today is far superior, and that's how databases should be created for the, the creation of projects like this.
So, just to clarify, that, so he's talking about the, um, the images on abutting lots?
He, he was actually taking our lot, too, because he was showing the runway. He was saying the runway's not even where it's supposed to be, because he was trying to o- line them up. And I was just like, I, I, I give him credit for taking the time to do it, but I was just like, I've never seen anyone come back and try to contradict an, a sealed instrument. I mean, a professional land surveyor has sealed these documents, as well as a professional engineer. Um, they're, they're not done without, you know, a lot of effort. And for someone to question it and say that we were all of a sudden misrepresenting things, doesn't make any sense to me. I felt his comments were totally misplaced.
Well, so he's just trying to understand. He's looking at something...
No, it's okay. I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying that, that...
So, but, but the...
Doesn't make sense to take a satellite image and then try to overlay it on an engineered plan.
Okay.
And then, then say, "Why is this, why is this lining up?"
So, I'm just trying to understand. So, the satellite images of the buildings on twenty and twenty-two didn't line up. Is that what he was saying?
I believe that's what he...
Okay, all right.
... implied, but we, we raised it upon ground surveys.
But the question...
The question was, um, would, would the difference in these dimensions affect the calculations related to the development of the housing density, which they wouldn't?
The setbacks, they wouldn't.
They're more accurate.
The open space. But what, what's happening on an abutting lot would have nothing to do with those calculations within that subdivision?
It would just be the assumptions that we used for what the watershed was doing.
Okay.
So, now, now, what we're doing specifically on site, that's, that's down to very high precision. What's happening on the abutting properties and within the region, now you're doing estimates.
Okay.
But the estimate would be no different from what existing to proposed. So, you know, if somebody wanted to, to try to change the impact, y- 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 you really couldn't, because you'd have to have made a judgment call on what all those abutting properties were, and, and try to lessen the impact of what your proposed development's gonna do. So, everything's accounted for properly, is what my point is. Um, and then the next, uh, thing that he had raised was the, um, was K. So, let me look at this here. Um, it was again about open space. It was again about open space. Oh, so he was questioning again what was, how we were gonna mow or maintain. So again, the HOA will, the permit will be the guiding document. The HOA will then develop off of the approval of the board, and we should just have some mutual discussion on what will be the mowed limits of this, and you make the decision. Like I said, I wouldn't have any problem seeing some areas go, just continue to go into forest, because they are. And that's really great for the perimetry areas to some extent. But the folks that are already looking out their backyard and seeing a meadow, I just think the meadow should stay, because it's gonna diversify the fauna and the flora that are there over time. I mean, we're talking about a long time in the future. I have a property at the Cape, and they do a lot of management for these properties. And they actually just did a burn on one of the areas going down there, because it was the most effective way to control those woody shrubs. If you just keep mowing and mowing and mowing, they're still there, and they use a burning technique to try to bring them back.
One of those abutting properties is my own personal home that we're building. And so the reality is, you know.
No green giants for you.
Only on my lot. Only kidding. So, you know, other than around the septic system, obviously you wanna keep that down in mode, because you don't want trees or anything else growing within those systems. The other thing is the neighbor that sits next to me, Ben McGovern, has said that he likes it to be cut a couple times a year, because he likes to have his dog running in the back. And next thing you know, in three feet tall, you've got coyotes kinda meandering towards his backyard. So he'd like to see it cut a couple times a year. And then, you know, right around the property, like I said, inside that horseshoe, you'd like to keep that open park. I mean, I envision something like a gazebo or something put there, or something that gets, you know, kind of passively used and adds to it. But all the property that sits behind 20 and 22, none of that will get touched, none of it. Anything to the west, there's the septic system to the west, but then beyond that septic system, none of that's gonna get touched either.
So maybe that can show on the plan?
Well, I was gonna say, I could talk to Freddie. Trying to remember her first name. Freddie, sorry. You talk to Freddie, and we can just mark up a plan, and that will be the guiding document. All right, so that's really my presentation, and then we'll just update the documents, because we still need to go finish our peer review, because that hasn't been funded. So we'll just make sure that the operable document is the six units, and whatever other documentation is needed, that we get that into play. So that on the 28th, because again, I'm concerned about Member Stein no longer being on the board, that we try to be in the right position to get the vote. So, thank you.
Okay. Any questions from anyone in the audience, or comments? Were your questions answered? Okay. Anyone online? One person left.
One person hanging in there.
I'll make a motion that we continue the public hearings for 26 Meadow Lane. Reservoir Meadows, major site plan approval, special permit lower impact development, special permit major residential development slash flexible development to April 28th, 2025 at 7:20 PM.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Rashid, yes.
We're all set, I guess, on the decision deadline? Thanks.
Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Beavis. You are now dismissed.
You sure you don't wanna hang around?
The next item on the agenda is a discussion item, 153 Corderville Road sign application.
One moment, please, point of order. Is everybody okay, or?
Everyone exhausted? Y'all still awake?
Motion for a two-minute recess, please?
Oh, okay.
Second.
Can I sit here?
Sure.
I move a two-minute recess, seconded by Ms. Houlihan.
All in favor? Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes?
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Rashid, yes.
And we're back. Take two, the next item on the agenda. It's a discussion item, 153 Corderville Road wall sign, sign application. Karina?
All right, I'll give a real quick update on this. So 153 Corderville is an office building, correct? And it's similar to the one we just recently had in front of us at the last meeting. So we got this application, and Shannon has a special permit application in, because the sign that's proposed on the side of the building, the wall sign, exceeds the height in the industrial park zone, and also the area. And they don't front Route 9.
Right.
So you don't get that extra benefit of additional dimensional relief in that. So basically, the planning board needs to provide a report to the ZBA in our standard format here on the five criteria, and any conditions or comments on the wall sign. And I believe the wall sign, I'll let you finish and do some of, once Mimi's ready. You can give more detail on what the sign says and all that.
You got it.
I'm done, believe it or not.
Welcome.
Hey, thank you. I am back. All right, so for the record, I should introduce myself again, right? Okay, so Shannon Boyce for Capital Group Properties, managing agent for 153 Corderville Road, L.C. So what we're looking to do, is similar to last month when I was here, is get wall signs. This is the first one we have. The maximum height they're gonna be is up to the roof line again, which is 38 feet. This particular sign is 75.83 feet, and it's, well, I believe the max area was actually 50 for this district, so it's larger than we thought. We thought it was 75, and, yeah. So I'm asking also to have a max square footage for signs of 80 square feet, in case someone wants another long, instead of tall, sign, I guess. And otherwise complying with the zoning bylaw for signs, 174 11D. So this will be the first sign, the first wall sign on that building.
So just to be clear, the planning board is opining on the actual sign that's being proposed in this application? But Shannon, in her special permit request, is asking that she be allowed to do this size not exceeding the roof line for future signs they put up there?
Yes.
So they don't have to keep going back to the ZBA?
Yes, like what we did last month?
Correct.
That we can just, as we get tenants who would like a wall sign, then we'll know what our limits are, and we can go from there, so.
I have a question on that. How many tenants will you have?
Oh, oh, I would have to get that number for you. I didn't have to do a parking calculation for this, so I didn't dig through the tenant file to do all my, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
But this is so far the only one of them who's requested a wall sign, so this is my first venture. And I think mainly the request came because I'm doing the big overview of all the buildings, and I'm seeing about getting wall sign permitted and, you know, uses and stuff, so.
Mr. Stein?
Is there any illumination?
Uh, yes, I believe, let me just, if we could scroll in a bit, because yours is better than the little tiny copy I've got. LED illumination, similar to the other ones we had, so it's sort of like backlight, similar to those. And we do agree with not having the sign lit up at, I believe you guys said 10:00 PM was the bylaw last time? So we, of course, agree with that again as well.
So those are translucent panels with backlighting? Is that how that works?
Yeah, that, well, that's what, it's similar to the ones we have at 132. So it's just gonna be, the lighting is in the back of the lettering, or the outside of the paneling, so it's just gonna give it kind of a nice glow, like it does.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
So Karina, if there's an issue from an abutter, or a resonant on the lighting, that they would just have to come back? I mean, we have like a year, right, on these types of things?
Not for signs, on lighting?
Well, I think we're facing other commercial properties, so hopefully we won't have any problems from residents, but we're not facing any residences where that sign's gonna be forward-facing.
Well, since, I mean, you're gonna be doing more of these.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, we'll see, but we'd like to at least get it covered, so if we get the request, we can.
I mean, otherwise, I have, you know, I'm in agreement with the five points, the affirmative for the proponent.
Ms. Houlihan?
Yep, and you're right, in our sign by law, no sign can be illuminated between 10:00 and 6:00 AM.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm, one, congratulations on getting tenants, because that's a huge, you know, issue, and I think getting people returning to office space, so.
Yes.
I think we should do what we can to support that.
Thank you.
So I have no issues.
Thank you.
Ms. Maria?
Okay, hi, thanks for answering my question. All right, so I do have a, I have kind of a concern about what Karina mentioned, because are we asked, are we being asked to sort of give an agreement for future size of future signs when it's not before us? I don't think we can do that.
No, what's happening is, to the best of my understanding, is that right now you're opining on that side. It's the ZBA that will determine if she needs a special, if that entity needs a special permit for any future signs. And what she's asking them is this generic, we're not gonna, this is the size, we're not gonna exceed. This is the height, we're never gonna exceed. There are rule, and we'll comply with everything else, and in the sign code, it restricts how many wall signs you can have per business, and how many signs you can have on the building, et cetera. So there's a number that you can have for each business, and that's it, and that's what's allowed. And it just eliminates their need to go back for a special permit for that.
Yeah, like if we get a sign within that square footage, and, well, it's not gonna exceed the roof line anyway, but say someone comes to me with like a 90-square-foot sign, I'd be like, no, we got you to 80, you know, figure it out. But I'm just trying to kind of come up with an overall approval for it, so that when we move forward with sign applications, if we get the special permit, we can just go to the building inspector and submit our applications for the signs, as long as they comply with the special permit.
I don't see how that's possible. So I'm looking at the industrial park, and so the wall sign maximum height is 20, and 50 is the square footage, right?
Yes.
So you're proposing in this, you know, you have kind of a one-off that we're asked to opine on, and that is gonna exceed, you know, that maximum height and the maximum area. So, I mean, the idea behind, I think, coming to the, either a special permit with the ZBA, or this process where the planning board weighs in, is that we have to look at each one individually. I really don't think that we can opine and say, yeah. But I just wanna let you know that I did look up the building really quickly, and inside there's a directory, and it looks to be about eight. There's like, I can kind of just make out barely, but it looks like there could be eight.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
Right, and so what you're asking for is eight oversized signs. So I can say I don't mind one. I don't know why it has to be this big exactly, but because it's off the street, we've made this exception before. But I think what you're asking is that we make an exception every time.
Yeah, like we did for 132, just set parameters, like we did for 132.
The parameters are in the code.
Well, I mean, like last month when I came to you, 132 was also excessive height sign.
That was a different circumstance. That was with the Fusion Group, and that was because there was already a, you know, a place there, and that it would sort of match the one that was existing, and the request was to be able to just, you know, fill in, you know, the exact footprint or whatever, square footage, of the one that was up there. So I looked at that as very much kind of like a one-off.
The board also did approve for us to allow for signs in a special permit above the maximum height of 20 feet.
Right, on that Fusion.
Yeah, on that building, on the whole building. So we're able to go above 20 feet for our signs, and that covered us for first floor, second floor, third floor, those little bars.
And we did that last time?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
The ZBA does.
Okay, I don't recall doing that.
Like you guys did the recommendation, and they were like, we're good to go.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I'm just saying, I don't really support that we are blanketly allowing. No, I'm just saying, I don't really support that we are blanketly allowing oversized signs and with six or eight different businesses that we're just going to say, yeah, every one of them's going to be larger. I don't support that.
I mean, I'm sure they'd be agreeable if we can somehow get this sign approved since they've already designed it, and when I, when you look at it, it is a rather lengthy, wordy kind of business to put up there, but I mean, if you can come up with language that I guess limits the rest of the signs to a smaller amount, that's, that's agreeable.
Well, let me just, can I just?
Yeah.
Bring something to the forefront. So it's the ZBA that permits this sign.
That's right, that's right.
The planning board only provides a recommendation, so the planning board can comment on this.
Yeah.
Actually, you can do more, whatever you want, but whether it fits into the scope is, and then the ZBA takes that recommendation and does with it what they feel is right. And if they don't go along, it's written in the decision.
Right.
But it's really the ZBA that allows that special permit for.
And I would like to say, I think it would be incredibly ugly looking if we had eight signs that are incredibly oversized on the front of a building. And the other buildings that they have in town where they have these wall signs, I think they're pretty attractive. They're designed nicely, so I don't see them turning that into a big, you know, graffiti wall art of signs.
No, I think so too.
I don't think we need to worry about that, anyway.
I think so too, and that's one of our, one of the things is, you know, we're trying to make sure with the different elements that it sort of fits in with the, you know, is compatible with the, with the building, et cetera.
Yeah.
And I think if you say, okay, one or two signs and they're evenly matched and like what we did with the other project, I, so the maximum is 50 square feet, right?
Yeah.
And this one's 86?
It's 70, 75.8. Let me just double check that. This one is, I have it right here, 75.83. And we thought initially we were just going over by .83 and then I was like, whoa, wait.
You're not going over by .83, you're actually going over by 25.
Yeah, by 25.83.
Yeah, so that's.
To 75, but it is, if, looking at the sign, it's a, they got a lengthy business name. But I mean, if you want to, if you can think of, I guess, limiting language as far as adding additional signs and that they don't exceed that or don't, you know, I think what's most important for us today is to see if we can get that particular sign approved. And the secondary was me just trying to do my little project.
No, I understand.
Where I just get this building set up.
No, I totally understand that you're looking for something.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think that, you know, for me, and I'm only one vote here.
Yeah.
But I, I think that, you know, what we did last time really shouldn't be repeated. I think, you know, we had special circumstance where there's already a space up there for a sign, it had been blank for a number of years, it was unsightly, it matched, and we said, okay, and to me, that was sort of a little bit of a one-off, but in this particular case, I think it would be unsightly to have not just one, but two, but three, four, five, six.
Yeah, very oversized.
Signs, and oversized signs, then I think it would be actually not compatible with the neighborhood, that suddenly starts to look like a different town than Southborough. So I'm not sure why the sign is so big. It's not because of the number of words, it's because it's got a giant, like.
The doo, yeah, things like that.
The doo and stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
I think it's, it's a huge sign. Yeah, I could see a whole building filled with the sign that big would be.
Yeah.
I agree, it would be a bit much.
But that's my, my position is, you know, if the board votes for it and, you know, says, yes, they agree, I would just like it noted that I disagree and I don't also think that we should be making any kind of a blanket, you know, statement that we can, you know, just generally accept, you know, signs that are one, one and a half times or whatever, as big as they're supposed to be, because I think, you know, that, those are the parameters. We didn't make these, this code. This code is one that we're trying to work with.
Mm-hmm.
I get that the building is setback, I appreciate that.
Yep.
But I think that the sign's too big.
Ms. Brashil?
Um, I think it meets the five requirements on the sign. I'm fine, thank you.
No sign may utilize translucent panels.
Hmm, let's roll on that.
To create an image by allowing light to pass through.
We have.
Except fronting Route 9.
Let me just make sure then, because this is not fronting Route 9, we're off Route 9 here.
Right, so Route 9, it allows you to do that, fronting Route 9, but not if you're not.
Channel letters mounted to rails, internalized LED illuminates with remote power supplies. Yep, so I'm not seeing where it specifically says translucent. Yep, there we go, blue translucent vinyl. So in that case, do I, is it possible to request for a, that to be part of the special permit as well to get us through for this one, or that's like a hard no for the town when it's not fronting Route 9?
Well, so it would be.
Because these are the typical signs.
It would be for me, but we, we just write a report.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, like I said, it's the same type of sign that you see on our buildings on 132, for instance. It's an attractive looking design, it's the same company we use, Viewpoint.
Yeah, but that's fronting Route 9.
Yeah, that's fronting Route 9. So, I mean, I could go back and if your recommendation in the ZBA agrees that it won't be translucent, then I could go back to Viewpoint and say, you need to redesign, I guess, the paneling, that it won't be, that it's not allowed.
And do you know if the lighting was changed on that site?
Not that I'm aware of, no, I can look into it, though. Was there something recent or?
It looks like it was changed, because it's really, really bright and doesn't look to be dark sky compliant.
Not, not that I'm aware of. I'll ask our property manager when I'm in the office tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'll reach, I'll let Karina know. I'll answer her questions.
So that would be my only comment is on the translucent panels.
Lighting.
Agree with the letter, because it specifically says that to create and, devices or other similar components to create an image by, let me see, design, canvas, other similar, to create an image by allowing light to pass through, is the text an image?
Yes.
Yes, right, okay.
I apologize, what was the, you said it's in violation of the dark law, was that, dark lighting law?
So we have a.
Sorry, we have a outdoor illumination by law that requires dark sky compliance.
Thank you.
And old lighting is seen as pre-existing, non-conforming, but if you change the lights, it needs to come into compliance.
Yes, yes.
And I live over on that side of town and it's got very bright all of a sudden, so I don't know if LED lights were swapped in there.
All right, I'll check.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Any other questions from our captive audience? Or on Zoom?
We have zero attendees.
Oh.
So we just need to consensus on those.
So, the questions, the scale is in reasonable relation to development scale, viewer distance, travel speed, and sign sizes on nearby structures. I would, I'd say yes.
Mimi, so I'm going to vote no, but if you guys want to vote at all and then maybe if you wouldn't mind just making a note of maybe my opinion, would that be okay? As a dissent?
Would be.
Because if you, if you all.
Or yes, one no. Yeah, so I have a, a similar, like we're, what's before us is one sign, and I don't know how the ZBA can then say, make a blanket without coming back for another report, but that's, that's on them.
On them.
But we're, we're just doing this one sign.
Okay, so question, I was going to go through all of our properties and see which ones they'd like to look into wall signs and stuff and do that, so should I, that's, if we don't have standing wall signs there already, would the planning board not be entertaining those applications, is that?
Oh, no, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that they, it seems like when you go to the ZBA, you're looking for a blanket approval for up to eight signs.
Well, yeah, I guess up to, they map for one for each tenant, because that's what they're allowed, is this one wall sign.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, if we want it.
But the, but what's before us is this one particular sign.
Yes.
So we, on the other seven, I don't know how they go forward without getting a planning board report.
Right.
It doesn't seem to be in compliance with the code.
Okay.
But we're, we're just opining on this one sign, just to be clear about that.
Okay. I was just going to say, I think the reality is that if you're looking to do wall signs for all the others, you should just do it to what the sign by law says.
Yeah.
Instead of trying to come.
Which would be the ideal, absolutely.
Right.
This would have.
Yeah.
If they'd known it was 50 and not, but no, things get to me after they're already developed, so.
So the next, the sign size, shape, placement, serve to define or enhance architectural elements of the building such as columns, sill lines, cornices, roof edges, and do not unreasonably interrupt, obscure, or hide them. I'd say yes.
I'm going to say, say no, just because of the size.
Number three, the sign design is in harmony with the other signage on the same or adjacent structures and provides reasonable continuity in mounting location and height proportion in materials. I would say yes.
I'm going to say no, because it's bigger than the other signs.
Are you a yes, Lisa?
Oh, yes, sorry.
But what about the translucent lighting that you were just reading?
Number four.
Okay, okay.
There you go.
The sign materials, color, lettering, illumination, inform are reasonably compatible with the building design, neighborhood, context, and use. So I'd, I'm going to say no on that one. No, no?
Five noes?
No.
Number five, the sign size, location, design, illumination are not judged to present a safety hazard to vehicular or pedestrian traffic. Oh, with the following conditions or notes, oh, here's the note.
We'll add it.
Any other conditions or notes, do you want to note on your noes?
Well, do we want to address this kind of blanket thing that's not really before us, but like just to mention that this is, you know, specific to this one?
I did want to ask, is it possible to, to still request signs up above the 20 feet, up to the roof line, but just say, well, beyond this sign, we agree to comply with the 50 square foot for future signs? Is that a possibility?
So.
So that we can at least get the maximum height okayed for the special permit, but not the square footage? Is that a possibility?
Is that even the agenda item at this point?
Yes, it was.
No.
Yeah.
It's a sign application, we have a process.
Yeah.
Involves these questions. You're looking for like a blanket variance.
Yeah, like what I did last time.
Well, I wasn't here for that, I'm saying, I'm sitting here now, and that's not how we usually do things.
So, well, last time, we were just looking at that Fusion sign.
Yeah.
In our comments, we're just on that Fusion sign.
Okay.
And then.
So it's something that I would ask ZBA, is that what it is? Like I would just go to them with, and take it from there?
Yeah, they issued a special permit. I don't understand, it doesn't seem to be within code for them to issue a blanket special permit for, you know, eight signs.
Okay.
It's, it calls out that each sign, you need to go through this process.
So.
So I don't, I can't speak to what they do, but we're, we're just, we're just opining on this one particular sign that's before us.
So last time on this same memo, I believe I made it clear that it's this sign, but noted that the applicant was seeking a special permit from the ZBA for this approach, right? And I think this might say the same thing, that the planning board is talking about this sign, but please note that, so that the ZBA didn't miss it, that they're asking for this blanket and the special permit, which is the ZBA's jurisdiction, but the recommendation is based on the sign. And you can comment on anything you like here, you know what I mean?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and I have it up here, too. When I wrote it in here, I just called it out that, you know, please note, something like that. I did in the last one, I'll have to check this one, but I'm pretty sure I wrote in there, just as the caveat that the special permit was seeking this blanket.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I look forward to hearing about lighting.
Okay.
You are dismissed.
Oh, thank you, have a great night.
And I'll get you a final copy of this once we finish it tomorrow.
Thank you, Karina, and I'll get that answer about the light for you tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
Do you have, would you, would you, or should I? Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, tell them what you want, yeah. I wouldn't want to stick around.
The lighting on that site, I think they changed the lighting on that site, I think they added LED lights, and I don't think it's.
It complies with our code. So the next item on the agenda is a discussion item, 361 Turnpike Road, Valvoline Instant Oil Change Minor Site Plan. Can you bring us up to date, Karina? Karina's going to update us.
Yeah, just in case.
Click the GED. Um, I'm just trying to see when we got this here. So submission two was provided to, let me just make sure that's the right thing. Previously, Fasen O'Neill reviewed submission two and we got review comments on this, and we provided them to Vito at Cornerstone for the project. And there were some other questions, too, about mass DOT feedback on the access from Route 9 versus Flag Road and truck turning radius, public safety vehicle radius, turn around the corner and into the site. So Fasen O'Neill provided review comments, and in that, there was a question on the groundwater separation underneath the detention system. The test pit that had been shown on the plan was about 30 or 40 feet away. So they recommended that a test pit be done, and then I recommended that it be done now instead of prior to construction, so that it wouldn't have to be redesigned, et cetera, if there was a problem. So Vito conducted a test pit on 14th, was it the 14th?
Yeah, yep, it was.
It was a Friday at 9:30, yeah.
14th.
Yep, and so Vito also provided a revised submission, number three, that we sent to Fasen O'Neill, and I. that we sent to Fussin O'Neil, and I also provided that test pit information following that Friday to Fussin O'Neil. So they're currently reviewing that. But Vito wanted to come in to get you up to speed on some of the feedback he had already gotten. And that's where we are. I don't believe you need, um, did you sign an extension for tonight? This is a minor site plan, so there's...
Yeah, we did the extension till April...
May 2nd.
Oh, May.
Yeah, May 2nd.
Yep.
So it's not a form, it's not a public hearing, but just to keep things in order, that extension request was grant, agreed to.
Welcome.
Okay, all right. All right, let's go over the couple items that Karina just went through. So there are three main items to start with. One was the driveway location. We did reach out to DOT, and they provided feedback on it, and I gave the email to Karina as part of the package, just their correspondence. They reviewed it with the Traffic Division, and they preferred the location shown on the plan. They did not prefer any curb cuts onto Route Nine, just specifically for safety concerns. And you kind of outlined that a little bit in the email, but it was just access management, reduction of conflict points, avoid issues with vehicle conflicts, and, and they also were concerned with their deceleration lane on that location. We did do a truck turning template. Fire Department wanted to just make sure they could get the vehicle into the site. This is a bus, 44 is the size it is. It's larger than the largest Southborough fire truck. It's actually very conservative on this. So that just showed that they could come, you know, they'd be coming down Route Nine, and they can get into the site. It's highly unlikely that they would actually bring the largest truck into the site, the ladder truck they usually set up out in the street, but they could get in there if need be. Usually, they would just set up right in the road and, you know, reach over and stuff like that. But it does show that you could get in there. And then the last item was just on the landscape plan. It was, so Steve Cosmos, the landscape architect, he made some changes. One of them, he says that there are no invasives on, or no all-natives on there? Okay, all right, well, we'll get that one at the end, then. But the main thing is he want, they were looking for some relief on the plantings along the roadway, trying to get more visibility rather than having that density of larger trees. They moved some to the back, and then they proposed to donate the equivalent number of trees to the town to be used elsewhere, you know, where you or the tree warden seemed fit out there. So essentially, they were looking at, donation, donation would be eight, six trees. They were previously located along the frontage. The other ones, they moved up and around the backside. So those are really the main items that we just kind of wanted to go through. And then, like Karina said, we're just waiting on that final review from Fussin O'Neil. I didn't think the last comments were too major, where I saw any revisions that would be required, but we'll still wait for them to, we'll hear from them. Hopefully, I think next week, I think you said, they might get the ladder out.
Yes, by the end of next week.
Yep, so. I think that's all we had, just those couple.
Mr. Stein.
So what's to stop the cars from going north on Flag Road?
Um, nothing.
I mean, that's...
We, we agree, said we could put a sign up there?
We've had problems in this neighborhood, like going back for as long as they've been on the planning board.
Right, and like we talked about...
He doesn't let people use Route Nine, and then the proponents want to use roads that really aren't meant for commercial traffic.
Well, in this location, I can just point out a couple things.
This is not like, this is like the millionth time that we've had something like this in front of us. We'll see what the rest of the board has to say. Thanks.
Ms. Houlihan.
Um, thanks. I, I still, of course, DOT doesn't want off on the Pike, Route Nine. I remain very concerned about Flag Road for the same reasons, particularly cars, even if it's, you know, minimal use, cars coming out to exit back onto Route Nine. It just becomes a very dangerous thing. The second issue is just the sign. So just looking at Valvoline all over, I know the last discussion we had was around the signs. Is there any way to do a lower profile sign versus like a high sign? Like, I know we have limitations on Route Nine anyway, but there are Valvolines that have very low-profile signs versus like an eyesore, which I think it would be an eyesore if it's a thing on a pole, versus kind of like a NANS type of style sign.
Mr. Maria.
I was gonna ask about the sign as well. Were you planning to put the sign on Flag Road as well as Route Nine, or just Route Nine?
Just Route Nine.
Yeah. So there, just about a mile and a half down the road, there is a Valvoline on Route 20 in Marlboro, and I noticed it doesn't have that kind of like peak piece to, it was, it's just really all one level. And I was wondering if that's functional, or if that's just what that would be used for. In, I think in your plans, you show kind of like a higher elevation followed by the bay, you know, lower bays, but because it's abutting the neighborhood, I was just wondering, is that like an office building up there? Or is that something?
No.
Could you go with a lower profile on the building as well?
It's just the architectural design. There's no office space up there or anything like that.
Yeah, I was wondering, and so the, as I mentioned, the one on Route 20 is, is low-profile, and it's, you know, smaller, looks like it's a smaller footprint, so I was wondering about that. I also believe that you need to use Route Nine. There's legal precedent in our own town. Neighbors who have sued Long Cadillac about putting, you know, potential traffic onto Middle Road instead of Route Nine. It's based on precedent that goes back to 1966, where it has to do with the dominant residential purpose of the road. And so I think that, you know, the Route Nine is really the egress that you should be asking Mass DOT for the curb cut. I understand that that whole parcel is industrial, and so, you know, you think that that's not a bad idea, but you really have to understand it really abuts the neighborhood. As Mr. Stein said, there's a longstanding history of, you know, discussion over, over that. And I, just to let you know, too, that the traffic report that you gave us is really quite old. And I, I don't know that it really reflects what's happening now. We know that, your, your report was, I think, 2012 or 2013. We know that over COVID, obviously, the numbers went down. But if you look at Mass DOT, I think they do like a monthly and even an annual traffic counts, that the numbers after COVID in like 2021 and two were even higher than before. And so I, I think that, you know, really, that, that's not really a valid kind of look at, at the present situation and the possible, you know, a safety hazard, I would say, on that road. So I don't mind your project. If it faced Route Nine and it, the egress and the, you know, access was from Route Nine, but I can't support it if it's going onto Flag Road.
Sorry, Ms. Brush.
Yeah, I don't want to speak out of turn. I kind of thought of something the other day, and I'm hoping the, the applicant might be amenable to this. We know Flag Road's a very scenic road. We know Flag Road is lined with stone walls. The part of the front of this property is lined with stone walls. We've talked about not putting as many trees out by Route Nine. There is a beautiful stone wall along Route Nine, and I think it has tremendous value. I would be interested in seeing that stone wall replicated somewhere else on the property, preferably along Flag Road, if there's the ability to do that. I think it just ties into the character, and again, they're historic stones. I understand they're historic on Route Nine, which, you know, doesn't necessarily mean as much. But I think where the other side of this project is on Flag Road, that, that I would really like to see something done with replication of those stones on Flag Road prior to the entrance, or wherever the entrance may be. So that, that's really my, my main point for now. Thank you for coming in and waiting.
Thank you. So Mass DOT had a, their issue was traffic going onto Route Nine?
It's both, yep.
Oh, it's both?
Yeah.
I thought...
It's the conflict of all the movements.
Okay.
They, it's a deceleration lane, so they're concerned with people pulling into that, and also just the confusion with so many entrances and exits right there. So it's really a safety issue more than anything. And they, they're very in tune with this area, you know, they've worked with this area before.
Yeah, they put in that...
Exactly.
They increased that lane, which made things way worse.
So...
You say deceleration, but that's not true. It's a acceleration past all the cars.
We want to get this off there, just to prove, that exactly your point.
Yeah.
We want to have more turning movements in an area where people are supposed to be decelerating, but actually accelerating to get by everybody else. And, you know, if I'm coming down and I have my directional on to turn into NANS or the road and the Flag Road, but then there's confusion, am I really going in here or not? And people pull out in front of you, you know, it just creates a hazard right there that you really don't want to have. And this is much safer to be off on the other side of the road. It doesn't limit or increase any traffic on Flag Road by having the driveway there. If you were leaving on Route Nine and you wanted to go up Flag Road, you'd just turn the corner and go up Flag Road. So it's irrelevant to the amount of traffic on Flag Road, the location of it. The width of the driveway right there, Flag Road actually, right there, is actually wider than a typical road. It's over 24 feet wide, where we'd be entering and exiting. So the safety there for turning movements exceeds your minimum standards. You know, and we already talked about if you did want it, we could put some signage up so no trucks could go up that way. They talked to all their vendors. They're very receptive to that. That would limit traffic going up the road. If you didn't, if you did have it on Route Nine, we really couldn't limit that. You know, trucks could just come out and go wherever they please. So you have a little bit more control by having that exit actually onto Flag Road. So I think it provides a safer situation, and it actually kind of limits some of the traffic by having it actually on the road itself. That's kind of all I had.
Yeah, because, well, there was a suggestion to have the entrance from Route Nine and the exit on Flag?
Yeah, the, the elevation's just, it, it's tough to make that work.
Okay.
Just because we have, I can't really hear, 16 feet, almost 14 feet of grade change. So you'd really just be, you'd be ramping up through it. The existing driveway that's out there, if you see that one?
Yeah.
That connects to, that's what basically you'd be doing, and trying to make that work with a site that has a drive-in and drive-out, and you really want that flat circulation around the building. We did look at that option as one of them in the beginning, but it really just didn't work.
And, and so that stone wall has to be removed from the front of there?
Yeah, we did, we were, we did look at trying to save it, but it does grade over it with the septic system. So, you know, that's a good idea, is to try to reuse it and...
That would be great.
Replace it from Route Nine up to a scenic road.
That would be great, yeah.
We could rebuild it right down that, this area.
My favorite subject. So there's still one non-native, that blue false indigo is not a native. Yeah. Everything else is good, much better. We're getting there.
All right.
Um, in what height are the shrubs? The shrubs need to be at least 36 inches, and that mentions gallons. I don't know what that means.
Yeah, we could change and make them say the height instead of gallons.
Yeah.
That would be easier.
And then, note, number nine on plant substitutions, says approved by landscape architect. It should say and town planner. And I, I like the no right turn for trucks. And, um... I hate the no trees in the front, but whatever Jack wants. Any questions or comments?
Can you send me a PDF of this, what you presented here? I don't think you did, right? You didn't submit any, like, you didn't submit that exhibit to us.
Yeah, you have all that.
Do we do?
I just call it a with, not crayons, but colored pencil.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Howard Rose to Bantry Road. First of all, thank you for actually trying to work with Mastot. That's not normal, so we appreciate that. We're not surprised by their comments because they always want to go straight through. They've tried to use our private roads, our towns roads, every single time. We called it what exactly it is. It's a deceleration lane. Maybe they speed up, but that's how NANS gets into their access, the car dealership before, Flag Road, even Cumberland, right at the thing, all use that deceleration lane. The difference between getting on at Route Nine or Flag is 50 feet. There's no difference. The challenge that you're not seeing, because there's been no traffic studies, when you take that turn, there's a hill. You can't see past it. People fly up there. People are gonna be taking a left out of this, or any way out of this, and they're gonna come right up, and you're gonna have someone T-boned or rear-ended. Just to the right nor north of that road on Flag is a culvert. One car passes, not two, maybe two Ugos side by side. So you're gonna have a car down the center, someone pulling up, you're gonna T-bone again. Flag Road, besides no sidewalks, when it snows, it gets reduced by a foot on either side. It's also where our kids walk to school, where our neighbors walk their dogs. Saturday is your busiest day. It's also Flag Road's busiest day for people walking, jogging, biking. No one is taken to the consideration of the safety of the neighbors compared to the requirement that Mastot wants to fly through. Interestingly enough, Mastot didn't say no. They said we prefer. Well, maybe the town's preference should take some priority as well. Route Nine is the business route. I would encourage you to use the business route for the business. If we get stuck with this, and I do like the project, by the way, I think the town would do well with this, but we need the access on Nine. If you're gonna go with that, first of all, the trees, and sorry, me, me, on Flag that are at the entrance, you now just block the sightline. So people coming down as you're taking out, you can't see the other people coming down. You need more trees out. A row of trees on, on the driveway entrance, how do you look right and see the people coming down Flag? You see a tree. So, I'm sorry, I put the trees have to go somewhere else, and I'm for the trees, too. The entrance on Flag is extremely problematic. It needs to come on Nine. Mastot hasn't said no. They prefer to have the traffic go through. Well, we prefer to have our, our residents safer and use Nine in this acceleration range for what it's for. If, again, we get stuck with this, I would encourage you that no right turn is not just for trucks. It's no right turn, period, out of this. The applicant has already said that the majority of this traffic is transient. It won't be going through the neighborhood. Because if you, if you're coming down Route Nine, you get off for this. What if you want to go the other way on Nine? Now they're coming through our neighborhood. They're trying to find their way back, and they're gonna end up going down Clifford or someplace that doesn't make that turn, and they're just gonna get winding through our roads. So a no right turn whatsoever out of that is a bare minimum for this to go through. But I would encourage you to really force this to go Route Nine where it belongs. Thank you.
So what if you get your oil changed? You're gonna get back on Route Nine and go up to Westboro and turn around and go all the way back down and turn around again?
So we live here anyway, and yes, we, actually, you get on Route, you take the exit to 495, you loop around, you come back, and you turn it, and you go to Crystal Pond, and you come back, just like if I was going to NANS. That's how we do it, because our, because there is no cross there. If there was a traffic light there, that'd be another story, but Mastot won't do that, and they won't put the entrance on the left where it belongs. Yes, that's how we do it today. That's Southborough. But no one dies, and no one gets T-boned because of it. Interesting, I, so imagine, as you come up Nine and you decelerate to get into the entrance on Nine, on Flag, rather. on 9, on Flag rather, right? It's the same, you're turning in, someone's coming out, there's someone trying to get out, you're stopped, someone hit you there because they didn't see you coming up, someone's coming down the other way, if you try to come out of there, no one's, it's a hill as well. That culvert is a hill. So, you're coming up like this, it's a culvert, it's one-way, one person goes through. Has the police chief, what were you done in the chat?
It's been sent. I don't think we got any-
Have we commented, though? We have fire, apparently, I haven't seen the police chief's comments.
If I could offer one thing, just one other point.
Sure.
I agree with that corner, where you come around to that big hill, and actually, we're taking the hill, taking that down, so you'll have better sight distance than you do today. So, when you come around the corner, you'll fully see right up, and you can see any traffic right there.
But not where the culvert is.
The culvert's further up, yeah.
Correct, but you can't, if you're coming down there, it becomes one lane, right? You're through there, you can't see who's coming up the hill.
Yeah, from there, from up here?
Yep, when you're coming down there-
And we can measure that again, just to verify it.
But you can't, you can't see someone turning in, and if you're taking that too fast, and people do, and you can't see what's going on, and someone's making a turn into your property, they're going to get T-boned. Or they're coming out of your property, which is a slower pace, they're going to get T-boned. That's my concern. Route 9, you've got a turn signal, and you've got thousands of feet from Crystal Pond to get into that lane and make that turn, just like you do for NANS and the car signal. The turn lane is already there specifically to do that. That's what it's there for, and that's why there's a curb cut already there. Again, MassDOT hasn't said no, they said they prefer not, because they prefer their traffic just flying through. We prefer that that lane actually uses a deceleration lane and gets used for the property. Again, I'm all for your project, I just need the access to do that's safe for everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can, can the, um, the trees along Flag get pushed back a little onto the property so there's a better sight distance? Because I ain't getting rid of them.
Yeah, that's no problem.
Huh?
Yep, that's fine, just can pull back a little bit.
And, what were you saying, Karina?
I think is, Vito could ask the police chief for a comment on his take on this. Yeah, on the sight distance and access, right? You could get an opinion from him.
Okay. And Karina, I don't know if you had any opinions as an engineer and town planner?
Oh, well, I was just mentioning it to Mimi, that I think based on the Green Book, right? The old-fashioned Green Book of geometric design, there are sight distance criterias that are set based on speeds and height and-
Right.
...angle, and you could actually prepare, you know, check that and prepare if there are any issues with that.
Yeah, we can look at that, yeah, because that distance from the culvert, I mean, we have some pretty good distance right there.
Yeah, because what sometimes seems like a small distance on a plan could actually pan out to be, or vice versa, you might discover other issues that make you change your mind-
Yep.
-if you provide a, like a, like a mini-analysis based on the sight distance.
That's fine.
Can I make one more request?
Sure.
While you're doing all this, can you please come join us, take a walk on Flag Road? And think about your kids, or your family, as you walk down that, as the cars are flying by, and think if even one more car is acceptable? Because I can tell you, my wife has been in a ditch, just got ran off the road, my son has been pushed off a bicycle. It's really not a safe road now. Any more cars on that road are not acceptable. So, again, if you're going to do it this way, which I strongly, which doesn't even look as good for your business, it really needs to have no, no right turn. No traffic from this should be coming down Flag Road.
Well, so even if the exit was on Route 9, people would still go down Flag Road?
But if what they're saying is true, yes, it'd be mitigated, though. And again, I'm the one who actually said the compromise was come in on 9 and go out on that with a left only. It still has a chance of being T-boned coming out of it, but it's a lot less than what's going to go down Flag. Other people said absolutely nothing. Yes, you could still come out on 9, and if you really wanted to go down Flag, but if they're saying that most of this is transient, going back on 9 anyway, it's just getting back on 9 anyway, so why take the other way? It should all go on 9. If the business, as the proponent has already said, 99% of it is coming and going that way anyway, then why just make it 100%?
Well, well, because it's easy to enforce the trucks from Valvoline to say, to people who, their contractors don't take a right, but it's impossible to, you can put a sign, but-
You can make the curb-
The chances are-
Make the curb hard enough that you'll, you'll clip a tire if you do it.
Well, I know from the Town Center Plaza on, uh, on Route 85, that's a, a no-left turn, and it means nothing. I mean-
Again, this is a driveway, you can, you can adjust the curb, so instead of the curb being like this, you force it so you can't, and it forces them. That's mitigation, it's not going to be perfect, but, you know, there's always a law breaker that's going to jump the curb, but same thing on 9, right? We have truck signs on 9 that says, don't, no truck access, whatever, and there's trucks on it, on Flag all the time, so... But anything we can do to make that road as safe as possible. I understand MassDOT's desire, their desires to keep and put as many cars on, they have a stated purpose to get as many cars off of Route 9 as possible, and they want as much traffic to go down Flag as they can possibly get. We need to mitigate that. Putting it on 9 is the best way. Thank you. But please, walk the road, you have a new perspective.
So, how many cars are expect, like, not that many, it's not like an office building or anything?
No, once they ramp up to full capacity, which takes a couple of years, they're looking at getting about 45 vehicles a day. I think they maxed out at about 50, so their projections are in that 45-car range, and that'll take a few years for them to ramp up to that. The first few years, I think they're, they're at like 30, and then it just slowly, as people get more familiar with the area, get more familiar with it, it's there, they just slowly plan to build up. It usually takes them, I think he said, about three to five years to get there.
So, what's the feeling on the board about the Flag Road?
I'm not ready to support it, as, with the current egress onto Flag, personally.
I think I'm in Jussi's court. I just am very concerned about Flag Road. It's remained a huge safety issue. I think if there's a way to change it so you can come off Route 9 and exit on Flag, I think that would be preferable.
I can't support it unless it enters and exits on Flag. I think, um-
You mean Route 9?
Oh, oh, sorry, 9, yeah, it's getting late, yeah. I don't think it's safe to actually exit on Flag. Years ago, there was a public records request that somebody had made with crash data, I'm sure the police have that. There's quite a number of accidents there, that's why that interweave was on the 495 tip project, because they base it, they base the priority on how many crashes they have. That's why that road was so heavily, the whole intersection interweave right there is because of the crash data. I've attended a couple of different presentations on that, and maybe, Jack, you, you've done that, I know some people also have, Mr. Stivers, for example, on the select board, have attended those sorts of things. And it's based on necessity and need to address Route 9, 495, you know, intersection there, interweave or whatever they call it. And the reason it was on the tip is because the number of crashes in that area on Route 9. So, I mean, it's kind of, I don't know what to say, that they, they, of course, don't want to put any more traffic there, because they then have a problem, they have to elevate that to a higher priority, because we know that's been taken off the tip. So, I can't support it unless the traffic goes on Route 9.
Ms. Brushill?
Thank you. I'm on the fence, I see it from both sides. I, I don't know what the answer is. With, we've had so much talk as well over the last few years about taxes and needing to get more businesses, and I'm, I'm trying to weigh that as well as weigh, you know, the neighborhood's concerns as well, and I, I do think there's concerns here. Again, I'm on the fence, I, I don't know what the answer is, but, but I certainly see it from both sides, so, I don't know if that's helpful, but...
Yeah. I think it would be helpful to have access from Route 9 and egress onto Flag. I think it's hard pulling out onto Route 9 there. But-
And isn't there an existing, like, curb cut on Route 9, right?
There is.
It is, it goes up a hill, though, which is a problem.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, there's a driveway that used to be-
Could, could we take it a step further, then? Can we ask, so, MassDOT's given a preference. Why don't we go back to MassDOT and say, instead of a preference, give us a yes or a no?
You have to put in a-
No, we'll say no.
Well, you have to put in an application. Well, I, I don't think that that is an actual curb cut. I don't think that, that's some sort of paved driveway, but remember, that was a residence house, and I don't believe that, you know, years ago, maybe Jack remembers, but-
It's Ms. Finn's house.
Mrs. Finn's house, yeah, but it never had that driveway all those years, that, that's been paved. So, so that was her driveway, she had a driveway on, on both sides? Is that considered a commercial curb cut or a curb cut? Okay. Yeah. Okay.
I'm just trying to give Vito some kind of direction here, and we seem to be everywhere.
We appreciate your work here, Vito, and we, I, I also want more tax revenue for the town and want more business. You haven't done anything wrong. You've done a great job. It's, you're, this is a very difficult situation.
Yeah, we're just, you know, trying to get something that works for everybody.
Yeah.
You know, have the safest thing possible, you know?
And this is a site plan, it's not a special permit, so it's difficult to say no, because it's an allowed use. But trying to come to some type of, I understand the Flag Road issue, if it would be a good compromise to have access off of Route 9 and egress onto Flag, I don't know if that would help satisfy some of the objections or-
Say that again, please?
I don't know if that would necessarily take the traffic, I think the easy movement's getting in, and, I don't know, I don't know if that would necessarily take any traffic away, I don't know. Going in and out, you mean, coming, like, say, in here?
Yeah.
And then go out? I don't know if that would, I mean, we could look at that option, we've looked at it, it's pretty steep, but we could look at it again.
Well, I, I don't know if that's a-
See, I think that the, the exiting onto Flag is the root of the problem. And is, is there no way to get traffics coming out onto Route 9?
Go opposite, then, have the access onto, from Flag and-
Entrance onto Flag is not what's going to hold up my vote personally. It's, it's coming out onto Flag that I find problematic.
You take a little bit.
So, so would the opposite work, then? Have a, have access from Flag, egress onto 9?
Yep, I would probably be okay with that, ultimately.
Yeah, it wouldn't limit any traffic on Flag, that's the only thing, except for that little end, that last portion.
Say that again, it wouldn't limit any traffic on Flag?
Except right here. Because if you came in, came around, came back out, you'd just go back on the other way.
Well, theoretically, but-
Anyone who wants to go here would either come out this, want to go this way, or go this way.
But you wouldn't get T-boned when you're pulling out?
Yeah, from, when you're leaving here, someone coming this way can see straight across, there's this log in-
Well, the fact that there's a right turn on Flag is not the agenda item. We can't, we have no control over that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, because I think you're worried about the volume of traffic up here?
No.
It's literally that area, that congregation of people turning up to Flag Road, having an entrance into a facility, having an exit out, so it's just the congestion there, knowing that it's already heavily congested. Okay, now, I'm just trying to get with the, I'm sorry, it's not the volume of traffic, people going up and out, we want just intersection to help.
Right.
If I may?
That, so the intersection, but also when people come out, it, it may seem insignificant, but my experience and just my own belief, if it's coming out on Route 9, it's far more likely to just continue going west on Route 9 than to, than to take another turn.
Yeah, unless you live, unless you live on that part of town.
Yeah, well, right, enjoy your oil change.
Right, that's what I, yeah, that's what we're saying.
Whatever.
Right, that's what I think, it won't, the volumes aren't going to change, and like, where everybody goes isn't going to change by the driveway configuration, it's just a matter of trying to make it the safest possible.
Yeah.
That's the thing.
Yeah.
Is that what-
So, is-
Kind of everybody?
Is everybody on board with that idea?
Well, I'm not really on board with it. So, the original plan was to come in and out of Flag, like, you have a whole, like, you know, route that somebody would come in, they drive through the bay, they get their oil changed, they, they go around the building and they continue out, right?
Right, that's how they work.
Couldn't you do the same thing, just flip it so that they come in off of Route 9, go around, have the oil changed, go back out to Route 9?
You could, but then, that's what we're trying to, you know, based on DOT's recommendation, trying to limit that movements on Route 9 right there.
I think what we're saying is, well, I'm saying is that I think you need to limit the movements on, on Flag, because Route 9 was built for that, it's built for traffic, and that lane is, I mean, I know, I hear what people are saying about the deceleration, but I don't know whether, Jack has seen anything at NANS, but people slow down, they turn into NANS, I haven't seen any close calls or anything, they turn into those other buil, you know, businesses, it's, it's made for safety. I think they should be using that lane.
There's no issues out on Flag Road, there's no accidents at the end?
There's crash data, we should get the, you should maybe request the crash data.
I, yeah, looked at it.
I know, but there had been a public records request, you know, years ago about that.
Mm-hmm. It's, yeah, it's all online now, so you can just kind of-
Yeah, yeah, if, if, that's correct, if a public records request was made, even you-
Well, I think you got four of us.
Four, for what?
I'm just trying to optimize.
On Flag, off on 9.
Okay, yeah, I don't support that, but that's, if you guys do. I, I think it's a, the address is on Turnpike Road, it should be on Turnpike Road.
Our address, I think it's going to be on the Flag, actually, the address. It's going to be a Flag Road address.
Yeah. Yeah, it's an industrial lot on that corner.
Just remember, when you get to that culvert, what happens is when it becomes one lane, if you're coming up the hill and there's someone coming down, they stop at that driveway. So, as you come around and you're trying to get in there, they're going to hit someone because there's someone stopped in the road waiting for someone to come down. So, that swing around the road may not be the best solution. I encourage the, the dialogue, and I love that we're trying to solve this, because I really would like this business here for the tax base, but again, if it's safety, if someone has stopped waiting for someone to come through that culvert, they're stopped in the middle of the road, and it's pretty much where that driveway is, so that's not really the correct solution. Yes, but you have to see, so we stop, so, because the culvert narrows, where it widens out where you can stop is, is at that property. So, it, it's narrow for a while. Yep. So-
About 100 feet past our, we're not at the actual old driveway location.
No, I understand, that could, yeah, it's farther, so-
Right, we created a little bit of space.
And I appreciate that, too, just know that people stop, and then sometimes it's too deep.
Yeah, I see one.
Or three-deep, because-
I see him.
Because people can't decide who's right-of-way it is, and someone's nice, there's three people coming off the road waiting, why, two more come down? So, it does go that far that people get stopped, so you will have people stopped, and you're coming, so-
I sat out there and watched him for a while.
Yeah. It's just the, you see that, that's one challenge of that road, so.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Good.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you. No problem, all right, thank you. All right. I don't know, maybe, if we can work out something.
Okay.
Yeah, I have to go back and go over with the applicant.
As soon as I get the comments, I'll forward them.
Okay.
All right, if you have questions in between, let me know.
Okay.
Thanks, Vito.
When was the next one?
April 28.
The other one isn't anything. So we don't have to continue this or anything? So the next item on the agenda is the National Grid Vegetation Management Plan, and I'll be fast on this, and maybe it's, so there've been issues with trees being cut in town that aren't on the vegetation management plan, and there hasn't been a hearing. Lisa and I chased down a crew last week and called everyone in the townhouse, and no one was there, Bill wasn't there, Chris wasn't there. Finally called Kathy Cook, and she got in touch with Mark, who was at a meeting, and Mark, and the police chief wasn't here, so Mark had to, Mark Purple went down there himself and shut down the operation. So then, after that, Karina spent a couple days going back and forth with Chris in National Grid, saying you need to submit a FY26 vegetation management plan, even though it's in our policy that requires Chris to ask for one at the, in December, which evidently never got done. So finally, National Grid submitted a vegetation management plan for FY26 on Friday, quarter of 12.
Like, yeah, two minutes, yeah.
Yeah, right before the end of the day, and then on Saturday morning, I received an email from National Grid saying Chris signed off on it. So in all of Karina, she talked to them, and then did her very.
Book.
Book of an email, everything that was discussed, and this is what you need to do, and it requires a meeting with the planning board. So he just signed off on it. So I think we've used honey, I think we need to use vinegar now, and write a strongly worded letter to Mark Purple and copy Kathy Cook, that either he doesn't understand Chapter 87 in our policy, or he's ignoring both. So my request is someone, and if someone else wants to work with me, because what I'll come up with probably won't be appropriate to send.
Oh, I think it will. Which, sorry, what road was it? It was definitely a scenic road.
Oregon Road they were on, Edgewood Road, right outside my house.
Mine too, yeah.
And they were down Oregon Road where the vernal pools are, stomping around in the vernal pools, cutting trees, I don't think Concom was ever notified. Yeah, so this is, this is bad, we're back to the bad old days when we completely ignored the law, we're a tree city, it's now codified in our code, Chapter 153, that we are following Mass General Law, 87 and scenic roads. So that's, that's the spiel, I think we need to address this. Does anyone want to work as my editor?
I can, Mimi, you can, I'll work if you want.
Okay, all right.
I, I do, I would talk to Chris a lot, so I can kind of help mitigate, I know.
But this is definitely not a honey letter.
No, I understand.
Mimi, I would help, but I would imagine I'm in the same boat you're in on this, so I don't know that I would be a help.
You give me, you put your thoughts down, and I will, and then you can re-review it before it goes out the door.
Okay.
I'm all vinegar, if you want a little eye for that.
All right, so that's that, and then 250 Turnpike Road status is that it was continued without, the 40B 250 Turnpike Road, it was continued without testimony until April 16th, and today, an easement plan and a subdivision plan were submitted, I didn't have a chance to look at either of those.
I think I sent it to everybody.
Oh, that's for 120, oh, never mind, I'm, never mind, I'm confused.
That was 120.
Okay.
But the ZBA meeting, 250.
416.
Yes, 416.
All right. Quick planners' report?
Yes.
I'm putting you on a timer, Karina.
All right, so the warrant was signed by the Select Board on the 18th, as soon as the copies come out, but I think there's a, I'll get your official copy, but it's in our planners' report, if you want to review it. The only thing I noticed was one of the letters, the ref, you know, part G, accidentally, the top one, when it went into their formatting, says A, but the motion says G for the parking, so it's there, it's just a scribbler's thing, just so if you see it, you don't have to be too worried about it. The, tomorrow's the last day for the state to reauthorize hybrid meetings, so we're optimistic, I haven't heard anything yet, but it'll probably be all over the Mass Planners' Forum tomorrow. Yep. So the ZBA public hearing is for 16 for 120 as well, I mean to discuss the conditions, maybe I'm confused.
All right, does it know?
No, it is, it is 120, the 116, okay, hybrid meeting, yeah. We had a department head meeting this morning, the goal is to try and keep that town meeting till one night, because it'll be tough to get a quorum the next day, once all those issues are, so that was one of the things. That's it for that. That's it for today, let me make sure this last thing, hybrid meetings, no, we're good, anything I missed, I'll follow up.
We're done, yes.
No minutes tonight, sorry, and the next meeting is the pre ATM meeting at Trotter, so we'll be posting an agenda at 5:30, and do the warrant article reports to town meeting, we'll have two letters prepared, very simple. Oh, no, we just saved it for you.
You're here for the best part, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion seen, none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Luthen, yes.
I'm here, yes.